Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is a Commissioner Budget Hearing Meeting. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, please call a room.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Gill. Absent. Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Pumares, absent. Commissioner Sebo.
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Here.
Mr. President, Vice President Pumares will be joining shortly after four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move right into this. Let's get to Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I do have an opening statement I would like to read into the record. Good afternoon, Commissioner President Richardson and the entire SS County Board of Commissioners. I'm here today to present the 2022 budget request for the SS County Department of Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs. With me this afternoon, I have Deputy Director Kate Hartwick, Business Manager Gabriel Paul. In spite of the global pandemic in 2021, we had a very exciting and productive year in the SS County Park System. We opened up a brand-new Weekway Park Community Center and stole new turf at the Tippet Field and the Riverfront Soccer Field. We also broke ground on the amazing exhibit and the new Westside Park Community Center. Hendricks Field Golf Course successfully completed a renovation project that included a redesign of the entire golf course, and we are looking forward to opening the state-of-the-art golf learning center this year. Over 45,000 rounds of golf was played at Francis Byrne Golf Course. Weekway Golf Course had a record of over 38,000 rounds, its best ever. Visitors to the Turtleback Zoo exceeded 893 guests. The 2022 Holiday Light Spectacular brightened the smiles of 111,000 visitors, who donated 18 tons of non-perishable food, 196 bags of toys, and 265 bags of coats. Several of the zoo habitats received enhancements, including renovations to the Bald Eagle and the Otter Exhibit. The SS County Environmental Center ran its first Riker Hill Community Garden Program with all plots sold, and as now, we have an active waiting list. Additionally, over 200 programs were offered to over 175 groups in the former Virus Nature themed field trips. Cody Arena highlighted its Learn to Skate program with over 600 participants. Over 400 skating families use the arena as their house, as a home base, and over 425 families enjoyed hockey clinics. The award-winning SS County Summer Concert Series resumed in 2021, and we are excited for the Cherry Blossom Festival to return live in 2022 after being off for two years. 2021 was an amazing year for the SS County Park System, and we anticipate 2022 will be even better. As part of our budget presentation, I would like to start with a graph of the revenues that were collected this year within our park system. So I'd ask Gabe to put that up.
Mr. President, for the record, Commissioner Gill has joined the meeting.
So Commissioners, as you see, 2021 is quite impressive. As you see what our total revenue was collected, was over $19,232,458. Now, keep in mind, that total revenue probably would have been even higher, but we still had some pandemic issues that we weren't able to run all our revenue sites at 100%, such as field trips were not allowed at Turtleback Zoo, so we missed a lot of the schools in the spring of that year, and our hockey and our skating program started late again because of the pandemic and issues of that. But as you see, the breakout of the pie, Turtleback Zoo represented close to 60% of the total revenue, which was $11,387, followed by the golf course facilities, $3,923, representing 21%, and Cody Arena was $2,115,000. So you see the breakout of the pie, golf concessions, those are our permits, those are any of our rental facilities that we have long-term lease concessions, our Turtleback Zoo complex, which would include miniature golf, the boating, the zip line, the zoo admission charges, and Cody Arena. So as you see, the breakout and the percentages of what that revenue was generated in 2021. So I would say we had an exceptional year based on all the obstacles that we had to deal with. Any questions on that?
Thanks, Dan. I'm sure Mr. McInerney has some questions for you. Mr. McInerney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Dan, could you, when you get a chance, could you send me something? And when I'm looking at the revenues that are recognized and is collected in 2021, there's a variance between the number you showed me and that number. I don't know if some of them may be going to trusts, there may be some differences. But if you can reconcile that $19 million number with some schedule or something for me, down to what number is in, as collected in 2021 in the revenue numbers, I'd appreciate that at some point, okay?
Yep.
How did these revenues numbers stack up against 2020?
Well, very good for 2020. Want to put that other chart up, Gabe? It was over $7 million increase in 2020, Frank.
How, where was that primarily from, Dan?
In '20?
Yeah, I mean, that's a huge increase from 2021, especially given...
Well, yeah, well, with the pandemic, we had, you know, our golf course facilities were closed. The zoo was closed for an extended period of time.
That's right.
Right, so that's why you see the low number there.
Okay, so it's really a 2019 comparison.
Correct, that's where I looked at it.
With some increase in fees that might bring it closer up over $18 million tonight. So you probably did over $1 million more than inflation-adjusted 2019 number, maybe.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's great. That's great.
Yeah, so we're pleased with that. And again, you know, we only ran two golf courses in 2021. Hendricks opened late in the season. But again, Weekway kind of, you know, took those numbers, you know, with the 38,000 rounds. But going into this year with the three courses open, as long as the weather's good, we're confident the number will be even better next, this year.
Wow, so you expect over $20 million, I assume, with everything, status quo, things are open. How did the zoo numbers hold up against the 2019 this year?
Kate, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so we are above our revenue at the zoo compared to 2019. Some of that does reflect price increases that went into effect in 2020, but really weren't realized because of the closures we had in 2020. We do expect to lose some of our school groups again in 2022, just because schools have not returned to their normal functions. But I expect we're going to more than make up for that with summer and camps and the return of a lot of our education activities in 2022, which were halted in the beginning part of 2021.
Outside, there's a dollar that comes out of that and goes into the, is it the Zoological Society's fund or...
No, we have an enhancement trust fund, and $2 of every admission is dedicated to that fund.
How much is in that fund at this point in time?
I'll defer to Gabe on that question.
Yeah, if you don't have it, you can get it to me.
Yeah.
I don't have that at the moment, but I can for sure...
Yeah, if you could forward that to me, I'd be curious in there. Is there an analysis that shows, I know there's points at times where the freeholder will see certain things that are funded out of that. In part, let's say there's an improvement to the zoo, you'll see money's coming out of that fund. But is there, is there like an analysis of that fund for 2021? You can show us what, you know, what went in and what came out?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. I don't have any other questions on revenue. Thanks, Dan, Kate.
All right, so we can go right into the 22 budget, Frank.
Mr. McInerney?
Yes, okay, Mr. President, thank you. So let's start with the Office of Director. It's what it was, a little increase from the prior period. But I have a slight increase, one less than 2% increase from the prior period. There's four positions, I have all, I have all four positions filled this point in time. There was something in the payroll register for a messenger in this department, but then I looked next to it, and it says Enviro Center. So I think, I guess, there's a difference sometimes in the payroll register versus the actual budget.
Correct.
We find in the personnel summary at times are different than what we find in the payroll register. But if you look close enough, sometimes it'll tell you why. So I don't have any issues there, I don't have any issues, period. But to be honest, just to say that those four positions are there, and all of them are accounted for. Same thing goes with the Environmental Center. I have a note here, I didn't even see it. The messenger wasn't in the payroll register because it was in the... I just, I just kind of noticed that now. So there's four positions there. I mean, there's five positions in the Environmental Center, and five positions again.
So Dwayne just called, he's asking about the field.
Frank Del Guardio, please unmute.
Please, everyone, if you're not speaking, put your device on mute. Appreciate it.
So again, so there's five positions here. A slight increase in the base salaries, 4.3%, an increase of $14,000. As far as temporary help, one of the things I've been having an issue with, Dan, is that when I look at the temporary help, the payroll register actually annualizes it. So if somebody was in there in 2021, their name is still in the payroll register. And they'll take, like, whatever the hourly rate was and multiply it and show it as part of your budget. That's, that's, when in fact, it's not. But $40,000 adequate in Environmental Center for 2022? Because again, what I see in the temporary or seasonal employees is something higher than that.
The $40,000 is adequate.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. As far as the other expenses in environmental, that's $95,000 last year, there's no increase in that. Let's go on to admin. In admin, there's actually a decrease here of $50,000 of what's appropriated. And what I don't understand here, in looking at it, there was five positions filled last year. I only count five positions again in 2022. So where does that decrease come from? It's a 12.5% decrease in administrative and fiscal affairs salary and wages. It doesn't, doesn't seem that...
Frank, Dan, and Frank, and Kate, this is an Et de Blasio budget. That is the retirement, Frank, of Elaine Sharp and backfilling her with a new employee. And Elaine was at the top end of not only salary but longevity.
Okay, so that's, that's the differential between starting and somebody senior.
Correct.
Okay.
And Dan, if you want to just confirm that.
Yes.
Okay, same five positions, but somebody left at a higher salary, somebody at a lower, all right. Again, when we're looking at, there's a $10,000 increase from $231,000 to $241,000 in other expenses for a net decrease in that department of $40,784. Let's move on to engineering. Again, there's not much here. The archives, yes, specialist, same as last year. There is seasonal payroll, again, in the payroll register allocated to engineering. Is there any seasonal people ever charged engineering?
Yes, we have some college students that assist us on a part-time basis.
And where would they be charged if they're not charged to...
I believe the lineup would be the seasonal lineup item we have.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, there's seasonal employees listed in engineering, but again, nothing budgeted there in engineer. So, you know, maybe they're charged elsewhere, but if there are going to be seasonal employees there, then it's, you may want to take a look and actually put the, put an amount in there that actually belongs there. Let's move on to arenas. Again, Dan, just, what did the arena do again last year as far as revenue?
2.1 in change.
Okay, and was that fairly consistent with 2019?
Actually, 2019, it is, second Frank.
2019, it did about 2.6 million.
No, so it was down.
So it's down a little bit.
Yeah, it was down. And again, a lot of that had to do with the, you know, the pandemic.
Sure, sure. Okay, so going to this year, there's, there is an increase in this amount. And I noticed it when I looked at the payroll register as well, for temporary help at the arena of $106,000. Is that, was that number always high, and now you're budgeting into it? Or was that number, is that an actual expectation to have that much more temporary help at the arena?
Temporary help, that was what, $190,000, correct?
Well, it's requested $190,000, and it's recommended $190,000. The prior year, it was $83,000.
Well, again, due to that pandemic, Frank, we weren't open, so a lot of those part-time people, seasonals, we didn't use.
All right, so now you're right back up to where you were.
We're up to 12, right.
So in addition to that, Frank, is we have minimum wage rising $1 this year. And so we do see an overall increase in temporary help across the department because of that.
Okay, and could you just, there's a $50,000 increase in other contractual services, goes from $246,000 to $296,000. That looks like something specific that you need, or...
The increase in our operational expenses for the refrigeration system that we have at the arena and the purchase of the new Zamboni that we are in process of trying to get.
That's not a jabroni, that's a Zamboni, right?
Yeah, it's Zamboni.
I couldn't, I couldn't...
It's this, I know, Frank.
All right, so let's move on to, yeah, let's, so everything's fine there in terms of the amount of people too. There's still nine people that are budgeted for, nine people in the payroll. Let's go to the parking deck. Let's just really skip over it. The same two people are there. At least the same two positions are there from the prior year. In Turtleback Zoo, so again, kind of going through the positions, getting very close to what you have here. What I started to see is, in the payroll registers, things like forestry aid, maintenance workers, general supervisor. Some of that stuff is charged off to open, is it open space? Some positions within the zoo are charged off to open space, like the forestry aid.
I think the forestry aid is out of the budget.
What I have in the payroll register, when I look next to it, I don't see it, it's not in the budget here. General Supervisor or three maintenance workers. They're listed in payroll register, but next...
Frank, I can answer that. How the time-in-attendance LGS functions is those title classifications or employees may be assigned to the Turtleback Zoo, because that's where they clock in and clock out, and their supervisor is in Turtleback Zoo, but they are expensed out of open space.
Okay.
So those titles like forestry aid and some of the laborers, they tend to be open space titles as opposed to Turtleback Zoo operating titles.
Okay, so those are paid out of the open space budget, and... Okay, so those are paid out of the open space budget and, and.
They're assigned to turtleback zoo.
Right, so that's, so, so they're not listed here, okay. Okay, um, so as far as the salaries, wages, the turtleback zoo goes, we had, uh, so here we're seeing, again, uh, I'm assuming the reason for the $300,000 increase temporary help is the same reason that you gave before for the arenas.
That's correct.
2021 is artificially low.
Yes.
If, if we were looking at 2020 or 19, or I should say 19, we'd see something, but higher. And as far as the, uh, the salary increases in, um, of 206,000, about a 9% increase in base salaries. We're going from what was planned in 21, 41 employees up to 45. And I think around this point in time, I'm pretty much on what you have about, I still have nine, there's 19 animal keepers, there's 10, there's 11 animal attendants at this point, or at least at the point of the payroll register. And so that's 39. So there's still, there's still some vacancies in the turtleback zoo that have to be filled?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right, and so that's, but rise in four positions is really the, the reason for the, for the increase in base salary, 200,000 increase in base salaries. And the temporary help here is 2.2 million and that, that, this seems to be where a considerable amount of, of, you know, temporary help is, is used in the overtime as well. So if you, if you take the increase of 200,000, the additional four employees, that's roughly $50,000 apiece. So that explains that. Expenses here, there's just one larger, not, not professional, not professional services for 150,000. What is, what is that for?
Our total, our total overall, we're, we have the new exhibit of the Asia exhibit where we have to get supplies. Um, and then we have a newsletter magazine, uh, which we both have to come into our new contract agreement, which we are expecting to, uh, increase. But the bulk of it is to support the new Asia exhibit that's being built.
Okay, and, and look, as we add on new exhibits, it's obvious that these other expenses are gonna, are gonna rise. So, um, I had a question, I thought, to the right time. Let's go on to cultural, uh, sorry, golf courses. Uh, so on the golf courses here, there's a very, very slight increase in base salaries. Everything else seems to be the status quo. The temporary help remains the same here, but a budget of 490,000. So that, that's different than the other, than the arenas and the zoo. That this, was, was it because these were basically operating last year and a higher level than the other two years?
Yes, they're higher, exactly.
Okay, so, so that's why that's consistent, all right. Other than that, there's, there's a 2% increase, I'm assuming for, for, I don't, how about your contractual reserves, Dan, in these departments? Are these, are they, they're not booked here, are they, within your budget? Any contract reserve?
No.
Okay. And, and we established yesterday that the county has a separate line item set up for all contractual reserves or potential, uh, contractual increases. I, I did, I did run, run into a situation here also, and I, I don't know if these are, I didn't see anything on open space, but I did see within the golf courses, a title called Laborers One. And there were two of them, and I, and a maintenance worker two. And I didn't see anything in the budget on that. Annette, is that similar to what you were talking about before?
Yes, Frank, that's correct. Those titles, again, are open space titles, but that individual might be assigned to the golf course.
And overtime overall basically came in on budget. I didn't, I mean, I'm seeing these numbers are pretty, like, in this case here, it's, it's 180, what it, and it doesn't, say an expend, I don't have it expended, so I'm, I'm, how, how was your overtime in general last year, Dan?
The overtime was, was actually pretty good last year. Golf stayed within your number and basically across the board, we were within our numbers.
Okay, great. Let's go on to arts and cultural affairs. Here, there's a decrease of $16,037. Is that similar to what we saw in the other department and that somebody leaving, retiring, somebody new coming on?
That's, that's actually correct, Frank, yes.
Okay, and again, when I look at this here, I see at this point in time, you're budgeting eight. And there's, um, the positions filled are, at this point, I have seven positions.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And again, there's not, there's not any change, really there's small change in, uh, other, other, other contractual, you know, services for 13,000. But other than that, overall, the budget for this department is still down by $3,000 from the prior year. And it's a parks. 13 people, there's must, I, I have five laborer ones here, which is one more uh, than what was expected here. And then I have one less electrician, so it still comes out to 13. But there's still two vacancies here within, it's a support. And temporary help is, is very large here, it's a million 150. What, what is, is that, you know, basically, um?
A majority of those are, are bathroom attendants in the park system and our senior facilities. Uh, we're seven, close to seven months. Uh, we provide, you know, uh, personnel at all those sites, seven days a week, uh, eight hours a day. So that's a good chunk of it right there.
Right, so if I go up to, um, the Orange Reservoir there, that's, I always see people there at the, that's what that is for.
Correct.
So none of this is maintenance in any way, these are just people. And what is that, are those jobs around?
Yeah, so, so basically Frank, we call them building attendants. Uh, and we, we usually kick off right around when the sun change is over, so we kick off in early April. And then we run seven days a week all the way up to October 31st.
Yeah, okay. As far as that budget goes, that, that budget, um, actually, the, the temporary was listed at 1,558 last year and it, and this year it's 1,150. Again, was that just an over?
Well, we, we, again, you know, we have a new building that opened up in Week Wake and we've changed how we maintain that with our bathroom attendant people. So, you know, as we improve our sites and our facilities, then we have to adjust it with the, the manpower to, to, you know, cover everything that has to be covered.
I'm saying that was actually down 400,000.
On, uh?
On maintenance and support. Temporary help was 1,558, now it's 1,150. That's a significant drop in what you're asking for. So unless it was an estimation that it was going to be higher last year and then because of COVID or whatever, it, it wasn't, so. I'm assuming of the 1,558, you, you wouldn't have spent that if you're, if you're.
Right.
Being significantly less now, so that's more or less what it is. What's the $300,000 in other contractual, the increase?
$300,000 increases for the new garbage bid, which is to pick up all the garbage, uh, from all of the parks. Uh, that is a new contract that we have never had, uh, for the park system.
Did we, we, I told you we had that in the past, we, we.
It, it, we had, we have it, but it's not the parks contract. It was a DPW's contract.
Okay, okay, all right. And, and this is out with a private vendor now?
Yes.
Okay. Has that contract been let yet or?
We went after big, yes.
Okay. It's pretty much.
Mr. President, uh, for the record, Vice President Palmaras has joined the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
So again, I mean, just, just going through everything here, there's a, there's this overall for salaries and wages, it's a 4.2% increase on 11,850, 11,377,011,853. And, uh, uh, you know, there is, and we've gone through the majority of, of the increases and other expenses, mostly contractual increases, um, on increased services from 8,392 to 9,53,002, uh, for an increase of 661. So this, but this is basically like a business, this whole parks recreation. I think it's one of the, almost like an enterprise fund where, where, you know, you really bring in, when you look at your budget, aside of debt service and, and, you know, fringe benefits, I mean, you're 19 million versus 20 million. I mean, 20 million coming in, 20 million going out here. Again, excluding fringe benefits for the employees and, and debt service and, and some other central expenses. But, I mean, that's, that's pretty unique. So it's, it's very much, I look at this very, in a way, you know, almost corporate. It, it, it's run like a business, you got so many, so many divisions to it. And every one of them is generating, for the most part, is generating some level of revenue for the county. So great, thanks, Dan, and thanks, Kate, I appreciate your time. Have any other questions?
Thank you, Frank. Mr. Polavecchia.
No questions for me, Mr. President.
I'm, I'm gonna stop calling your name.
Okay, I'm just here to write them.
I'm just, I'm just not gonna call your name anymore today.
Always my. I'm here in case Frank, like, passes out or something.
You got it. Commissioner Sebo.
Thanks, President. You heard at the beginning, when Dan went over exactly what Essex County offers in terms of facilities. We are so great here in Essex County, that counties all over the state look to Essex County for what we provide. Compared to when the county executive first took over and what it is today is unbelievable. And it's a full example of why I really get tremendous gratification from working on the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board. Because everything the county wants to do comes to that advisory board and we discuss it before it comes to the Board of Commissioners. And Dan and Kate do such a fantastic job considering all the facilities we have here in Essex County. And you heard how much they do. It's truly unbelievable. So I personally want to thank them for all the work they do to provide Essex County with an unbelievable number of facilities that are for all the residents of Essex County, and they really, really enjoy it. So thank you, Dan, and thank you, Kate, for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo. Commissioners, any other questions?
Yes, comments?
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Uh, Dan, I want to take this opportunity to thank you and Kate and your golf director for the job that they have done during the course of this pandemic and making sure that, one, the golfers are safe and sound and, and the facilities are clean and, and sanitized correctly and the carts sanitized correctly. That's what helped you with that upswing in Weekway Park, man, because of all the, the good things that you guys have been doing. And I commend you on that, because I know it's not easy during the ti, the times we were going through with this pandemic. But I thank you for what you've done because we get the compliments. They come back and compliment us about it because they don't get to see you, Dan and Kate. So thank you very much for the services that you render to us, and I'll always be a, a fan of you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioners, any other questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you. Um, I too want to commend Director Savante and his staff for doing a tremendous job with the parks and recreation programs that you guys provide. I'm really excited to see the new plantings in Orange Park. Um, I have a quick question for the trash collection that's going to take place with the private vendor. Did you say that's for the parks? If yes, is that going to include, um, trash removal for Orange Park as well?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, do you know the frequency, um, of that yet or you're still working on the bid?
Commissioner, I, I think it's, it's either four or five days a week.
Okay, because you know, you know, at the meeting, you guys met with me with that community group. That's a big item of, um, continuous complaint that we get. So I'll be happy to communicate that to them, that a private vendor is going to be there. Do you have a timeline for when it's going to start?
It, it usually, it increases as a season progresses, so it's usually around April it kicks in.
All right, so April, is there a cutoff period, like will, when it will end, like if you're doing like April to November?
Yeah, I think it's April through November, but I can get back to you with the exact information.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Commissioner Cooper. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I like to, um, also commend you and Kate, uh, Dan, for all of the work that you do. I know I call you sometimes on the weekends and whatever it is, you know, you never fail. You answer the phone, which is incredible, uh, and you always get a, a job done. So, you know, I really, uh, appreciate all the hard work and fact that you, uh, you like me, your phone's never off. My phone is never off, so, yeah. Thank you so much, you and Kate.
I, I, Commissioner, I just want to, you know, it's a teamwork, uh, you know, through our county executive, what, what his leadership and, and everybody we work with on a daily basis and, and the commissioners, uh, make it all happen. And I want to thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Okay.
Mr. President, our next group is the Department of Health and Rehabilitation. And everybody's on, they can now turn on their cameras.
Mr. President, if I may periodically, um, give a reminder or instructions for people when they talk, if they can at least periodically state their name and department, uh, for the benefit of, of the radio broadcast. Because this budget here, it is also being aired on a station, radio station.
Okay, who's up?
Hey, good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. President. This is Frank Del Guardio, Director of the Department of Health and Rehabilitation. For the county, joining me today is Assistant Director Patricia Keenan and our Business Manager Jackie Kepferarty. Um, just a brief overview for your information, our department has been extremely busy in 2021. We went from having a health department of, um, three full-time employees and one contracted employee to building one of the most robust health departments in the state of New Jersey. All of those employees, however, are grant funded and it won't be a subject of this budget hearing. Um, we have an additional 54 employees at 50 South Clinton who work under Community Health Services under, um, the leadership of Eileen Fishman uh, during the pandemic and currently, uh, we've been going all out and providing services to our constituents. All of those employees are also grant funded and, um, are not part of this budget. So the budget today, um, that we're discussing is for mostly the hospital center and some other, um, expenses like to nutle hazmat through Community Health Services and, um, some of the other financial commitments, uh, that we have to the state of New Jersey. Um, overall, you know, believe it or not, our staffing levels during 2021 and into the new year have been very good. This budget that, um, I'm asking for approval on, we only have one vacancy in our hospital attendant. I know years in the past, we had up to 20 vacancies in that position, so. Although hiring has been very difficult, apparently, uh, we have been, uh, a. although hiring has been very difficult, apparently, we have been a source where our employees are coming to us and some really good candidates, and we're very happy. We currently have an orientation class in right now consisting of two nurses and a hospital attendant, and we have another one coming up in two weeks with a new psychiatrist we're bringing on board. Our biggest struggle has been obtaining psychiatrists. Right now, we're down three psychiatrists, and you'll see that in the budget review when we get to the Medical Services Department. That's our biggest area of concern, and we have some ideas to address that. Like I said, we do have one new psychiatrist starting on February 8th. As far as revenue goes, our daily per diem rate has increased by well over $100 as compared to 2021. So we are anticipating an increase in revenue for 2022, which is always good, and that fluctuates year to year. But our rate was published for the year, and it is an increase over 2021. Operationally, there have been, there's a few minor changes in our budget, which I'm, I'm ready to, to discuss with my team tonight.
Yes, sir. Please continue.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm ready for, for questions at this point.
Ready for questions already? Okay, cue in, Mr. McInerney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Frank, it's good to see you. Frank, could you just tell me about the revenue base that supports this department, and you said there was an increase in the, in the, in the reimbursement? Is that based on the per diem or?
Through you, Mr. President, again, Frank Delgado, Director of Health and Rehab. What happens is the revenue base that comes in, it's a per diem rate per patient. That rate changes based on the residency of the patient. If the patient lives in Middlesex, Passaic, Bergen, Hudson, whatever county they come from, we get 100% reimbursement on those patients. We have an agreement with the state for Passaic and Middlesex, 100% is paid automatically by the state of New Jersey, the other counties we bill. So it's based on a patient census. So the number of days reflects how much revenue you make. So during the pandemic, we've been a bit restricted on our census due to our admission protocol where we've got to keep patients in quarantine, but our census is creeping up. That's why I anticipate our revenue to increase in 2022 by a significant amount. When you see a per diem increase of about $110 over your previous year and you're averaging, you know, 68,000 patient days, that number is, is gonna go up. It's just the law of averages and, and what we anticipate as far as admitting and getting our census closer to our 180 count.
Frank, how far behind is that per diem? I know Pino, is that the one that Pino does for us, you know, consultants?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President, that's, um, it's, it's two years usually behind. Your cost reports from the, from the prior years back, so if you take your cost report now from 2019, they project our costs for 2022. So then 2020 will, what comes in 2023. It's a very odd formula, and it's extremely complicated, but it's all based on what you spend. So it's kind of an ironic situation where if you spend less money, your per diem rate comes up less. So you kind of want to reach your, your budgetary, but at the same time, we always save money every year. So, um, finance, and from a financial standpoint, we're doing well.
But, but again, it's, um, you, you could be in a year where your census is down, but you're benefiting from the increase in the census from two years ago. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. President, what, what usually happens is that when your census goes down, your rate will go up. Just to try to make you whole.
Because the denominator is, is lower, right?
Correct.
So the cost of the cost regardless of what your census is.
Well, it's all, mostly it is based on staffing, because a lot of our expenses are paid through the Department of Public Works. There's a lot of things, utilities. You know, the Public Works manages the building, so they pick up, you're not capturing those true costs in that indirect cost report. That also is reported and goes into calculating our state A rate.
Right, so there, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot more that has to be indirect costs that have to be brought into the direct costs of operating that goes into that report that's submitted to the state for your reimbursement, your, uh, per, per diem.
That's correct.
All right. But again, just help me out with this. If, if we're two years behind and the rate is struck from numbers from two years ago, does that mean in '22, you're dealing with a reimbursement number that was based on 2020's, set, you know, cost and census, whatever?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay.
The way that the math works on it, we really have no control. There is an appeal process, so they give, the state sends us a heads up. They say, okay, this is the rate, and this is how we derived upon your rate based on your patient days and your actual costs. So then we could go back and say, well, wait a minute, we feel this is inappropriate, or we need this number, and usually they do work with us when things like that happen. It's very rare. You're not gonna argue when they increase your rate, but at the same time, with, you know, back in 19, they did cut our rate, and we were able to, through the county executive, to negotiate those numbers to more of a reasonable per diem rate.
Well, that's, and that's the point, is that you, you could get into the situation where your, your costs are going up, but your reimbursement is based on a lower cost year. I mean, you have inflation going on, o- o- obviously every year. So I, I guess the point I'm making is the per diem doesn't, doesn't match really the current costs. It's based on the economics of, of what happened two years ago, and, and you're saying that really doesn't lead into a lot of problems.
All right, and through you, Mr. President, you're absolutely correct. I mean, there's way, we always try, we have, always have a heads up. It's a year-long process in our cost reporting. We're constantly in contact with our financial consultant and the state. We have a very good dialogue with the state, with the Rate Setting Bureau, and, uh, but you do have that risk. That's why our costs have remained relatively constant over the last five or six years. You have not seen large increases coming out of our department.
And some of those county patients that you, you mentioned were reimbursed at 100%. What, what are Essex County patients? What kind of reimbursement rate do we get on Essex County patients?
Through you, Mr. President, the, um, right now it's 85%, but if you offset that with the 100% from out of county, it's about, it works out to be about 91% reimbursement.
And that also includes any debt service that is not in your direct budget as well?
There, there's no debt service in our budget.
Well, I'm talking about the cost, when, when you do the per diem, does that include debt service?
It, it has some depreciation from original construction of hospitals, but not, not, uh, debt, sorry, definitely county function.
So the, so the depreciation, you know, if you, if you were looking at this from a cash standpoint, you'd have to evaluate the difference between the debt service and, and the depreciation number.
Right, correct. Through you, Mr. President, I mean, every time something is brought out of commission or a new capital purchase is made, that's reported and becomes part of our cost report.
So they operate on, on a, on a depreciable, everything's done on depreciation over an estimated useful life?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to get a little bit more and get the board familiar with also the revenue stream on your department, which is kind of complicated. But also to understand the delay in that, which I think is important. If we can just go, we'll start with the director's office, and there's really no change there. There's a slight increase of $20,000. There's one salary there, and that, that's where that shows. So last year was 58,000, this year it is 60,547, and other expenses at 210 remain exactly the same as they were in the prior period. If we look at the following department, there, there is a page here within the personnel summary, a summary page of all your departments, and I just want to review this quickly. It's saying, and again, this is a certain point in time that there were, out of 384 budgeted positions throughout your budget, 331 have been filled, and at this point in time, there's 53 vacancies. Is that roughly the same now as it was when this, when the personnel summary was done?
Um, through you, Mr. President, I think it's slightly up. I think we're around 340, but that's combined a full-time, part-time per diems.
Okay.
Total, I, I believe our headcount right now is 340.
So it's about nine.
Yeah, yeah, it's about, it's close.
And let's take a look at the administrative, administration for the hospital center. A very slight increase of 1.1% from 1,306 to 1,321. Going through this again, I, I'll ask Annette de Blasio, maybe she can answer this, because we're getting involved with positions that are listed in the payroll register that I, that I have, is the only document I can review, and then trying to match it up against the personnel summary. And there was issues with a, with a dentist, a senior accountant, and a clerk four in this department and hospital center administration that are listed there, but I'm assuming those are budgeted elsewhere, because they look like full, full-time, full-time positions. Annette, is that?
Yes, yep, Frank. So Annette de Blasio, Management and Budget. The dentist is really a part-time per diem position, if I'm not mistaken. I could double-check how it's coded. The senior accountant, that is a position that has been a part of also another department, and they help out at Frank's Hospital Center in his business office. So that's where that position might be. She might be assigned in another department, but she's been at the hospital center helping Frank for several years now in his business area and HR area. And then what was the third one, Frank? Or was it another?
Clerk four.
So Frank, that might be one of the movements that we did recently with bringing someone over from one of your other divisions to help in the administrative arm?
Um, through you, Mr. President, Frank Delgado, Director of Health and Rehab. Right now, I believe we only have two clerk fours. One is in rehabilitation services, and the other one is in the business office. But they've been with us for quite some time.
But again, with regard to, and again, it's not so much the budgetary issue. I'm, I'm just looking at proper positioning some of these positions in the departments that they actually work at. So give me the reason again that why the dentist doesn't show up in this, in this budget, if, if the dentist works in this, in this division.
The, the dentist.
Cost center, I should say.
Cost center should be in medical, so I'd have to take a look at the paperwork to make sure that he is in the right cost center, because all of Frank's dentists are not full-time, and they should be coded to the hospital center medical services. Am I correct, Frank?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President, Frank Delgado, that is correct. There's three per diem dentists. They're paid hourly. So we have a dentist here five days a week, but they all, department points to medical services. Why it would be in administration, we'd have to look into.
There, there is, there is three part-time dentists listed under medical services. So I'm assuming this one listed in the payroll register under administration may very well be one of those, because I only came up with one other position, dental position filled, one other part-time. I thought there's all, all three of her, of, of them are aboard, but maybe at this time there were, there were only two. But again, it's, just trying to reconcile with the, you know, the document that I have to work with and, and, and what I see in the personnel summary. So, but again, the administration's budget is, is up less than 1%. So the other expenses remain constant in 2022 from the amounts adopted in 2021. So let's move on to general services. General, the general services salary line item is up 1.2%. There are, it's from 6 million, it's up to 6,61,000 from 5,991. Those are not contractual increases, so what, what would, what would generate the rise, and are, are those increments in that?
I threw you, Mr. President, yeah, those would just be contractual increments.
Okay. And then, uh, looking at the individuals I have, the only things, again, there's some other things here. Well, I, I, I'm, I'm not gonna bore everybody with the fact that we've got some, some differentials. I can, I can work them out with you. I'm in that, but I do only have two, two truck drivers on here as opposed to three. Has that position been filled, or?
Through you, Mr. President, Frank Delgado, we do have three full-time truck drivers on board right now.
So those positions are all four, 11 of those positions.
There's one, there's one vacancy, actually.
Where, where is that? I don't.
Well, actually, what happened, we do it, we have two full-time truck drivers and one supervisor. There's one vacant, there's one vacancy truck driver.
Okay, that's, that's what I had, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. So again, this, this is up by the amount of increments, and other expenses in this case are actually down by 34,000. So the increase, that 34,000 obviously offsets part of the 69,000 increase in base salaries to bring the increase in this department up by four tenths of 1%. Let's move on to medical services. Then, that, I got two medical services in here. I'm sorry, we were in medical services, correct?
Uh, general services.
We were in general?
Frank, you'll, you'll see in the book, it goes from hospital center, center general services to hospital center medical services.
Yeah, it does. General services to medical services. I think I got, actually, I got two medical services in my, in.
Oh, I wonder if that was a printing, a printing issue.
That was what was confused. All right, so now we're in medical services, correct?
Correct.
All right. Let me just get my bearings one second here. Well, I, I gotta, I gotta be honest with you. I, if we were talking about medic, general services, I, I'm I was, no, I'm, I have, all right, here's, here's what I have. I have a personnel summary behind a medical services. I have a general services personnel summary behind a medical services summary budget, so that's, that's where I got confused.
Yeah, Frank, I'm looking at that now, so I think that was a printing error. It just looks like it's in the wrong, um, location.
Okay, so, so let's just go back and recap. The general services, what I, what I was talking about with regard to the increments of 69,000 was in medical services. Okay, that's the way that's listed here, correct? Medical services has a, base salaries went up by 69,840. Can you just confirm that?
That's, that's correct, Frank. That's, that's correct.
Let me go back and recap on general services. I looked at the correct summary, personnel summary page, given the positions where we talked about truck drivers, but what I was not looking at correctly was the summary page. That budget for general services is only up by $6,778 or 1.1%. And there's a $20,000 decrease in other expenses, which brings that budget down by $13,000 from the prior year. So that's consistent with the general personnel summary that I was talking about before. Let, let's go on to medical services now. Correct? Yes. So, so medical services is what I was talking about with the increments of 69,840, and then we have the reduction in two of the line items for other expenses of 33,000. As far as the medical services personnel summary, I, I think the only question really there was, was on the part-time dentist, which Frank may, may mention too, and on all the other positions, I, I don't know how many vacancies, there's appears to be about, about 12, 12 vacancies here at this point, 10 to 12 vacancies. about twelve, twelve vacancies here at this point, ten to twelve vacancies within medical services.
Frank Delgado, Department of Health and Rehab, that's correct. The majority there are are psychiatrists. And then some clerical positions on medical records, all under medical services. And I, I can see the issue with the dentist that she wasn't included in payroll one.
Okay.
So that's why there's, you're not seeing that.
I, I did have four psychiatrists on out of, out of the seven.
Correct.
Okay. And then I have seven out of the eight psychiatrists, social workers as well of this, although this says eight. So again, overall on, on medical services, that budget of ten million dollars is up four tenths of one percent or thirty six thousand dollars, very, very nominal amount. Let's move on to maintenance, facility maintenance. Again, that's really just all other expenses. That's up about forty two thousand dollars. I'll just ask you why, what, you know, why the increase of forty two thousand?
So Frank, I'll, I'll jump in here, Annette from budget. The facility maintenance is primarily the HVAC contract. If I'm correct, Frank, that is the DCO. So there's no salary and wage attached to this cost center. It's really just the maintenance of the actual facility.
Okay.
Frank, I could answer that, what happened on this one. Frank Delgado, Director of Health and Rehab. This was the increase in environmental services contract. About a two, a two percent increase. That contract was brought to the board back in November. There's a significant increase. It's a big contract.
Okay.
Other than that. Yeah, there's, there's nothing else. The, the DCO is paid by Public Works. We, we do not pay for that contract out of our budget.
Okay. Um. Let's move on to nursing. Here, here I, I had a you know, an issue, but let me, as far as hospital attendants. I had the one thirty that's budgeted and I had filled one hundred and twenty four at this point in time. So there's roughly six, six vacancies there. And on graduate nurses, which is another high volume position at fifty nine, I had fifty one. It says fifty six. So I, I came up with eight vacancies there. So between those two, I've got fourteen vacancies. Of the years also, I could not find anything on this item labeled pool nurse. I couldn't find anything in the payroll register that came up with that, with that title.
Yeah, through you, Mr. President, Frank Delgado, Director of Health and Rehab. So there are several employees that are out on FMLA leave, so they did not appear in payroll one. Eight of the pool nurses or maybe per diem, you may see it as. Eight of those did not work in payroll one. And six per diem hospital attendants did not work in payroll one. So that's where you're seeing the differential. They're on, they're on payroll, but they just weren't scheduled in payroll.
Okay. What I, what I don't think I saw was graduate nurse part time. Do, do they show up in, in payroll or under specific names or is that something else that is elsewhere?
No, they're part time nurses. There's nine budgeted and there's eight that appeared in payroll one.
I didn't see those. I had six heading, just out of seven. Another issue is I had something called clerk one. I had ten positions for clerk one. Yet there were other clerical positions like clerk typist and clerk typist keyboard clerk that I, I couldn't find anything on. So I don't know if that's a title issue. But you only have one budget, one position budgeted for clerk one. Yet there were, when I looked at the payroll register, there were ten clerk one.
So Frank, I can answer that, Annette de Blasio from budget. If you look on the personnel summary, there is a in-house title called ward clerk.
Yes.
That actually in the civil service world is a clerk one.
Okay, that's, that explains that. Thank you. I did not know that. Very good. So again, with, with, with the fact that the nurses positions, you know, there's, there's, they seem to be pretty well filled, right, Frank, for the most part?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President. That's correct. We, listen, we've been very lucky. There's a nursing shortage throughout the country.
There's always been.
Yeah, there always has been. And, you know, previous years, lo and behold, even being in a pandemic, our director of nursing has done a great job at recruiting and interviewing candidates. It helps a lot of our employees also teach. They do programs at various hospitals and colleges. And it's a good recruiting ground for us.
Yeah, what, yeah, I mean, typically nursing was the place we went at the end of the year to transfer money out of in, to areas that needed. It was, it was a failsafe. You were always going to have under expenditures in the nursing salary or wage line item. That doesn't seem to be the case.
Yeah, I hope I'm not disappointing anyone with that. That's where a lot of our efforts went in this year.
It's a good job, Frank. So that, that nursing budget, let's just go back to the summary page on that. That is up. Really, the larger percentage is that is the greater anticipation in overtime for two thousand twenty two. Was that because the, I mean, it was budgeted nine hundred last year. This year it's one point five. Was the two, what did the two thousand twenty one actual number come in for overtime?
Well, through you, Mr. President, Frank Delgado, Director of Health and Rehab. That number is more of a realistic number. Every year, we never met that nine hundred thousand. It just was impossible to meet.
Right.
So every year we were always over. I don't know if Jackie Camp already has that actual, the actual over nursing overtime number. But it's a bit skewed because a lot of our employees work vaccination sites. And we haven't reconciled all of the overtime yet through the cares funding and the American Rescue funding.
But there's still, there's still overdone to be charged out of your budget to the grant.
That's correct.
Mentioned, okay. But that, that wouldn't, so this one million five is more in line with what typically you expended even beyond a regular COVID year, let's say, let's call it.
Well, that's correct. And we still, you know, with the, the latest surge of cases, the overtime numbers increased to cover the vacancies for employees who have gotten sick. So we don't, we can't anticipate right now what two thousand twenty two is going to look like.
No, also.
The one point five, we feel is a more realistic number. And I believe we did go, you know, we had these discussions with Annette and say, you know, it's time to get that number to where it needs to be. It's more, it's realistic.
Right. And that's, that argument could be made in some other departments as well historically. But, but in this, what I'm saying here is that the fact that you've got your complement of nursing up to very close to what you budgeted, which you run from six positions there with the hospital attendants and maybe four or five within whatever it was, and close with what it is in nursing. Obviously, you're not going to have the slippage inside in the base salary line I uncovered for the overtime.
In a perfect world, that's the plan. You know, our, our employees do have a lot of benefit time also. So even if you're fully staffed, you know, when you want to give employees time off, it always incurs in some form of overtime to cover those those, when they're taking their benefit time. The majority of the overtime is, that's what's being spurred by.
Yeah, I mean, within the budget itself, it's saying the vacancies right now at the point of time that this personnel summary does was, was nine hundred and five thousand valued at vacancies were valued at, you know, nine hundred thousand. So. And other expenses in this department is exactly the same as last year of a hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred. Let's move on to therapies. Again, looks like this, there's an increase of sixty five thousand five oh five in vague, in, I'm sorry, in base salaries. I'm assuming that again is the increments, the contractual increments, because there's not there's not a change in, in the number of positions. There were twenty two last year and twenty two budgeted this year. So.
You, Mr. President, that, that's absolutely correct. No additional positions in that department.
I, all these positions I have, you know, are almost filled at this point in time in the activ, in the activities, you know, therapies. So I really don't have anything else on that. Let's go on to maintenance patients. Can we just explain this slide either to the, to the commissioners?
Through you, Mr. President, maintenance of patients is, is a budgetary number that the county is responsible for paying the patients that are housed in hospitals out of Essex County. So what happens is there's hearings throughout the state of New Jersey for patients that have Essex County residency. So if a patient shows up in the emergency room at Atlantic City Medical Center, our council has to adjudicate those cases. And then if that patient is then sent to a state hospital or a county facility in the southern part of the state or Greystone or any other psychiatric hospital out of Essex County, we owe fifteen percent of the cost on those patients.
Correct. And and the maintenance, next phase maintenance of patients, state institutions, that, that's our county residents that are in state institutions that we have to pay for, correct?
That's correct. And that's the same as I explained earlier. We send a bill to out of counties that are not in our agreement.
Right.
They do the same thing to us. They send us a bill. Fifteen percent of the costs are, is sent to us. And that's all handled through the, through county council's office.
Right. And that's all, that, none of that money, that money comes directly out of general, general treasury. I mean, that's nothing offsets that, other than what we get in for other pay, other county patients in, in our hospital.
Well, it's, it's a fixed budget amount every year. It fluctuates based on the estimates we get from the state. So they'll give us a report, would go to, go to Hassan and he would see the numbers and put the budget in according to what the prediction is for this year.
And is, are those numbers ever reconciled between what the, what they're budgeted at and what the reality becomes sometime later?
Well, I, through you, Mr. President, absolutely. They, because this year we saw an increase just because of the unavailability sometimes when we were under lockdown or we weren't admitting patients. We did see a rise, especially in Hudson County. Hudson County took more patients than what they normally would take. Because any patient, Essex County patient, we try to admit as soon as possible.
Okay.
If they're appropriate for admission here. So we did see those numbers from Hudson go up in two thousand twenty one.
And then what's the last page? That are other institutions, mental health, other institutions, two and five hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's wherever, you know, a county patient may be housed. Someone who has Essex County residency in any other facility, it could be a DDD or what have you. There is some bill back to the county. Depending on what their diagnosis is and what type of facility they're in.
That's fine. I, I don't, I don't have any other questions, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Delguardo, and thank you to your staff.
Thank you.
I apologize. Mr. Paul Vecchio.
Nothing for me, sir.
Commissioners, Commissioner Sebo.
Thanks. It's me again. Frank mentioned briefly about the, about COVID. And I have to commend him for all the work he's been doing this past two years. Because I'm reading regularly about all the, all the people living there who have the COVID who become and have to be immune from, have to be put in places where they can be separated from the other people who are living there. And Frank, I want to commend you for doing such a terrific job separating all those people from the general population. And how you've done all that, I don't know, because it's been a tough two years. How have you been able to accomplish that?
Well, through you, Mr. President, it's Frank Delgado, Director of Health and Rehab. It's a team effort and that's mostly handled through the Health Department. So we brought on some really talented tracers and individuals, nursing backgrounds and what have you. We actually had a case today with, you know, a homeless individual who needed a code blue shelter who was COVID positive. So I don't know if you're referring to things of that nature. But things like that happen every day. And also through our Division of Family Assistance and Benefits, they receive grant funding for cohorting individuals that need housing in available facilities. So it's truly a countywide team effort when it comes to that. One person will never handle that alone, so.
And you haven't lost nurses because of the situation.
You know, I do think we did have a few retirements for some that may have retired and they, just because of the pandemic. In-house, we've been enormously successful in vaccinating our patients. So for example, with this, the new Omicron wave that hit, we had over fifty employees that tested positive in that timeframe from December eighth until current. We've had four patients test positive. So it's amazing that we have staff coming in. And all of these, from what we trace are, you know, household exposures where they're not transferring the illness to our patient population. Our patients wear masks. Our patients are highly vaccinated and highly boosted. And I think I'm, I'm proud, most proud of that accomplishment. And again, team effort, our nurses are doing the vaccinations in coordination with emergency management and the Health Department. And Patricia Keenan's been keeping the database, writing out vaccine cards for all our patients when they're discharged. It's been an enormous amount of work, especially now with the mandate that takes effect in two days for healthcare workers. We've been busy.
Well, you should be very proud of all the work you've done. It's just incredible to deal with this terrible situation. And you've been out really outstanding at what you've done. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
For doing so much for Essex County.
I wish I could go back last year and look at how darker my hair was because you could see what it's, the toll it's taken.
All the stress.
Yeah.
Welcome to the club. Just be happy to have hair.
Yeah.
But you've done a great job under this situation.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing that, I also want to say thank you for all the work that you, you've done and how you build up the staff. Because I, I can remember not too long ago, you were having some issues filling some of those spots. So I'm glad that it all panned out and leveled off. And, and to only have four patients now to test positive is a testament to your leadership. And, and the men and women who you employ over there. So, you know, my hat's off to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I truly appreciate that.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing that, let's move to the next. Public Works. Public Works is now into the meeting. Sanji is on. And he is ready to go.
Mr. President, as a reminder to the participants, we're also broadcasting on a radio station. So periodically, when you speak, just identify yourself. Thank you.
My name is Sanjeev and I am the Public Works Director and the County Engineer. Today I have with me David Angelio, the County Planner. Lydia Sharmel is the Fiscal Analyst. County Administrator, you want to say something before we start?
No, I'm good. Thanks, Sam.
Okay, just to give you an overview of, of Public Works, we have six divisions within the department. The, I'll go through the divisions. One is engineering. Engineering does most of the engineering work throughout the county with, for the roads, bridges, buildings, any engineering aspects. And we have a Division of Planning. David Angelio heads that. Which we have a planning board. He runs the planning board. which uh, we have a planning board. He runs the planning board. Every, every development in the, the county comes to the planning board, major developments. Uh, then there's a division of roads and bridges, which takes care of the roads, bridges, traffic lights, curvers, anything to do with the, the snow, uh, leaf pickup, all those things. And there is, the fourth division is the mosquito control, and we call it environmental uh, affairs uh, and that takes care of the mosquito control, the, the ditch cleaning, water management, making sure the water flows, that there's no standing water for mosquitoes. Uh, the fifth division is the fleet management. We have approximately eight hundred vehicles in our fleet, most of them of uh, sheriff's buil-, uh, sheriff's vehicle and prosecutor's vehicle. And we fix those vehicles, and we have around ten people in that fleet division. And the last division is uh, Buildings and Grounds. We have several buildings, which is old, and, and there are a couple of buildings coming up new. We take care of all the buildings, all the MEP, Mechanical, Electrical Plumbing, and the day-to-day care of the buildings. In addition to the six divisions, we have two statutory boards. One is the planning board, as I said, which one is uh, headed by David, and I am also a member of the planning board. And there is a Board of Construction Appeals. Any construction code violation in any town comes back to the board for, for, for appeals, and we have to hear it. It's like a courtroom, and whatever decision the construction board makes, it stands before a court of law. Uh, in addition to that, we also support Fox uh, Department with the capital project.
Sanji, Sanji, hold on one second. Is, is it me or is he freezing, or is it just me?
Um, he's not freezing on my end.
It's fine.
It's fine.
All right, so it's, it's, it's on my end. Okay, thank you.
So in addition to uh, other work, we also support Fox Department in their operation and their capital projects. Uh, we also manage state grants, federal grants. Uh, we have plenty of state grants coming through NJTPA. And there are a couple of federal grants, which recently we are receiving for the joint bridges between us and Hudson County and us and Bergen County, which is in the queue for next several years to, to come, which are hundreds of millions of dollars. Um, we have safety grants for traffic this year, almost twenty-six million dollars from NJTPA. We have a special grant, CMAC, uh, this is for uh, environmental, roadway environmental, actually, pollution control, which is two point three million dollars. And we have bridge grant, at least five to six million dollars this year. Plus, we have annual transportation program, which we came to the board last week for approval, which is approximately nine million dollars. Um, we have uh, an operating budget of approximately thirty million dollars, one hundred and five uh, employees. Ninety-six is filled, and we have fifteen vacancies. Uh, we have approximately sixteen seasonals, which we use for mosquito and for store-related operations. Uh, we have built up approximately five point seven million dollars in snow trust money and seven hundred thousand dollars in mosquito trust money. Which will help us in case there is an overage in any uh, snow operations. We have enough money in our back pocket uh, to cover it without coming back to the board. That's all I have as introduction. And I'm ready for any questions you have.
Thank you, Sanji. Mr. McIner.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, overall, uh, if you look at the budget, the uh, the salary and wages um, Public Works budget um, increased from nine million five hundred seventeen thousand to ten million one hundred and seventy-nine thousand um, three thirty-four for a seven percent increase overall. Throughout the various departments, mainly in, in administration. So from a, from an overall viewpoint, and we'll, we'll hit each, each department. But Sanji, if you could, you could just give us an overview of, or, we know these are not contractual increases, because the reserves for contractual increases are held in a line item outside of the individual uh, budgets. But if you can just give us, especially in uh, Buildings and Grounds Administration, the need for the four hundred, four hundred thousand dollar increase, and then possibly some directors as well.
Oh, Mr. President, oh, Mr. President, uh, if, if you look at the, the personnel summary, we have, we are requesting to add five vacancies, five new positions, which is uh, we used to have twenty-one people in our mosquito control. And we, right now, we have thirteen people, so we are trying to build it back up. So there is three new positions we are looking for in, in mosquito control. And uh, and as you know, we are adding new buildings to our inventory of buildings. So we need full-time uh, stationary engineers to run these boilers, because you need twenty-four-hour operation for the boilers. So we are requesting for a couple of people, additional people in, in the station, Buildings and Grounds. So there is a total of five in, uh, additional positions we are requesting, and that is that additional amount which you see in the salaries.
And that's an important point. What you're saying is that because of the, the addition of new, new construction and new office buildings, um, there's an increase in, in, in the staffing, especially like you said, in, in, I, I'm assuming uh, HVAC and, and all that other, uh, all those other issues with the um, with the boilers and uh, stationary engineers that, that are required. So, I mean, what, what's the ne-, the next building is what? The, the one we just started now, that's?
Through, Mr. President, we just commissioned the MLK Building in June. So last year, we only, only budgeted for six months. So you will see a twelve-month budget for that MLK Building this year. Uh, we also are finishing up a new building in Cedar Grove, which is Public Works slash OEM Building, which is uh, fifty thousand square feet, which we'll, we'll use some CARES money there, but we have our traffic operation, which is in the jail, the science shop is at the jail now. Uh, the Durham Avenue, and they're going to come back here and join the rest of the Public Works here in Cedar Grove.
And, and you, you actually have, have you budgeted those, those potentially, those potential positions required for those new buildings, assuming they come?
That's, that is in this budget, yes.
Okay, so that, that, these new buildings are part of that, those, those salary and wage increases that I made mention to you about.
That is correct.
The, the increase in uh, existing personnel, it's an increase in the required personnel necessary to address um, expansion of our, of our inventory of buildings.
Correct.
All right, let's, let's start from the beginning here and try to, try to get to. Engineering, we, we actually have a decrease in salaries and wages, thirty-three thousand, and just a hundred dollar increase in other expenses. So overall, that budget is down by two percent. Personnel um, is actually down, team positions down to fifteen positions in, in engineering. I don't have any questions on that. Let's go on to planning. In planning, same thing, basically, we see a reduction of uh, in wage item primarily because of uh, the, the temporary help. There's a reduction there from seventy-one thousand of temporary help that was budgeted for two thousand twenty-one down to ten thousand in two thousand twenty-two. Why, why is that such a drastic reduction?
I moved that uh, temporary help into another budget, mosquito control, where I use them mostly. So it's, so it's reduction, reduction here, but it's addition in another.
So it's, it's, it's trapped, it transferred elsewhere. Okay, and the fifty thousand dollars is uh, increase from two ninety-three to three forty-eight is is based on what? Additional position? I don't see any additional positions. It's just, just a incremental contractual increases?
Which, which one are you talking about? Which?
We're, we're in, we're in Division of Planning.
There's, there's actually a reduction there. There's a reduction of five thousand dollars in the salaries.
Yeah, yes, but, but that's because you transfer temporary help from this department to another department. That's not a.
I also, I also have uh, fifty-five thousand dollar coming in grants, which is approach, which is actually, we're, we're expecting a lot more than that. We'll have a hundred thousand dollars coming in grants this year.
Okay, but, so then, if there's a hundred thousand coming in more grants, and there's only fifty-five thousand recognized in this summary, why, why is it? Why salary?
They have fiscal, they have fiscal year runs different than ours, so I, as soon as I get the, the letter, then only I can put that in the budget. So our fiscal year is in January, my letter comes in July.
So you recognized half of that grant.
Correct.
That even, but you had that last year too. So it's, it's still begs the question, why a fifty-five thousand dollar increase in, in base salaries? Is that just, is it contractual? Is, is, is there increases in the actual salary, or?
No, there's no increase in salaries. Salary is actually less, and I don't see that fifty-five thousand dollar increase, uh, yes.
If you look at line oh, one, zero, dash, zero, zero, eleven, planning base salaries, you'll see it jumped to ninety-three up to three forty-eight.
Any increase in there, it's, it's all contractual, and there is no additional increase I have.
That, that's all I was asking.
Yeah, yeah, that's, the answer is, the, yeah, but position is moved from another department into this department, and that's why you see the difference.
Okay, all right. Let, let's move on to Office of, of the Director. There's, there's no increase. There's a slight increase there of two point five percent. There's no increases in other expenses. This budget's three hundred and thirty-five thousand. I, I don't have any, any questions there. Let's move on to Buildings and Grounds. Under Administration, there's a, the only question I have, there's a four hundred thousand dollar increase in non-professional services, and I think uh, you could explain that, might still have something to do with the additional buildings, but.
Yeah, as I, I stated before, uh, we only uh, budgeted six months last year. So we, this, this year, we have twelve months, and that is for additional janitorial for MLK Building and additional HVAC and all those things at MLK Building.
Okay, all right. And obviously salaries and wages in this line item are act, in this department are down. So there's, you know, the increase here is really generated by those additional contracts that you made mention of uh, for, for janitorial services. Add to whole of records complex. There's a, there's an increase here in salaries and wages of five percent overall uh, to one hundred and forty-two thousand, one thirty-two in base salaries. Are those contractual increases?
Uh, through Mr. President, that was the one I was talking in the beginning. I added a stationary engineer there, so you have additional vac- uh, positions. Which creates.
All right, that went from, from a table board organization, thirty-three to thirty-four, so that's your that, that's your increase there. Well, that one, one position and whatever increments you have is a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. Otherwise, there's no increase. There's a three thousand dollar increase in other expenses out of a billion four hundred and forty-four thousand.
Correct.
So let's, let's move on. Buildings and ground, building maintenance. Um, here again, we see um, an increase uh, in base salaries of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And I'm looking at yeah, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Which, uh, on just base salaries, can, can you explain that? There's, there's, there's string employees here, but there's some other items down below salaries. There's one, an apprentice program.
Yes, we, we use apprentice program whenever we have large construction, uh, which we used at the, at the, the paint uh, school building, we used in all our major construction projects, we use apprentices and from the union, so that we can train young kids from what tech, and they become tradespeople.
Right, but, uh, so, right, but when I look at last year's budget, if I take the apprentice program and the seasonal, last year's two hundred and twenty-six thousand allocated to those two items in two thousand twenty-one. In two thousand twenty budget, it's kind of reversed. The apprentice program went up, and the seasonal went down, but you had the numbers together for two thousand twenty-two, it's still two twenty-six. So those numbers didn't change. So there's, looks like there's an extra position, although it's not listed. Uh, there's a supervising maintenance repair for sixty-nine thousand dollars, but there's no, it, it doesn't, this position's been filled or even budgeted.
It's, that is, that is one of our employees, Billy Simon, uh, he retired, but he's still on sick, uh, leave with us. He's taking care of his family, but he's still on my payroll.
Okay. All right, so, so he wasn't there last year, is what you're saying. He's, he's there.
We, last year, he was, I thought, I was thinking that he's taking retirement, but he kept uh, his active employment with us.
No, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to identify the nine thousand increase in base salaries and
He moved another, another employee from another division to this division, because to make the LDS and MSA uh, match. So that's why you have, if another employee came from another division into this division for budgetary purpose. Which employee is that? It is, uh, that's the clerk type is taking.
One second, please.
Which employee moved? Building maintenance. He was moved there.
I just bear with me a second. I think what I'm trying to reconcile here is when I add up the recommended two thousand twenty-two base salary, it comes to three hundred and seventeen thousand.
If you look at.
How it's five hundred, four hundred, five hundred and thirteen thousand. Five hundred thousand, four thirty-seven. All right, here's, here's what we're gonna do. I'm, I'm gonna have to look at this, because these numbers, for some reason, aren't making any sense to me in this department. So, I'm not saying they're wrong, I'm just saying I don't, I don't understand them.
If you look at the, the. If you look at the supervising maintenance repair, that was not budgeted. It was in another di-, uh, division last year. That was moved back here, and we see the budget this year on sixty-nine thousand five hundred forty-three.
No, I'm not seeing it. I'm not gonna waste the time now, Sanji, we'll, let's iron this, okay? But I'm not seeing it. So let's, let's move on. Buildings and ground hospital, this is, this is strictly um.
Contractual and DCO, it's mainly DCO.
That's, that's DCO there. And under general repairs, it's the same as last year as well. Uh, let's move to Public Works Fleet. Um, there's change in salaries and wages. And in uh, other expenses, there's uh, a hundred thousand dollar increase. One in maintenance of motor vehicles and one in automotive supply. So is that just based on greater demand, or?
Last year, if you look at last year, I, I ran out of money on those two lines, and we had to do budget transfer at the end of the year, and that is.
Fair enough. Okay, very good. Thanks. Let's go to some bridges, Office of the Director. Let's go to roads and bridges, office of the director. This, um, this I was having a little bit of a problem because the numbers were kind of comagled with this as well as the next department, sorry. But I think all these positions like there's, is there two, two vacancies still under, uh, office of director and roads and bridges?
Yes, sir, we have a tree superintendent who retired and, uh, the maintenance repairer.
And there's one additional position that you're looking for in two thousand twenty two? Went from twenty three to twenty four, is that, and that is, is that primarily the increase?
We are looking for one more, one more body, because if we have a sophisticated traffic system now, they need another traffic technician.
Annette, are you, are you still on the line there, can, can you look at the personnel summary page on roads and bridges?
I'm there, Frank, what in particular?
Um, on the summary, personnel summary page at roads and bridges, office of the director. That comes to two million four forty two, five twenty six?
Right, um, and, uh, Annette de Blasio, office of management and budget, what is also included in that two million four four two five two six is the seven hundred thousand dollars that we put for the snow.
The overtime?
Yes, for the snow overtime.
Okay, so that does not appear in the base salaries on the summary page?
That's correct, it is a separate cost center, but it comes under their, their, um, office of the director, but is its own cost center.
I got you.
The snow overtime.
Right, and that's, that's actually the next line item, so is okay, so you, it's budgeted there on the personnel summary, it's not in the, it's budgeted separately on the snow line, and that's a line item within the introduced budget.
Correct, it has its own account number.
Okay, and so if we go there, that's the same as the prior year, and so are, uh, all the other expenses, although there was a request for a million dollars more, this, the expenses listed exactly the same or budgeted the same as the part two thousand twenty one.
Correct, Frank, and just, um, as an aside, the budget, um, the, the method behind that was that we were building the trust snow fund. So we kind of have, we felt sufficient funding, so we kept it, um, flat as last year.
Okay.
We, we have five, five point seven million dollars in the trust fund for snow.
Okay, um, I, and, say that again, Sanji, what, what was that, you put how much?
Five point seven million.
In the snow, in, in the reserve?
Yes.
And that's, that's left, oh, money's left over for, did they transfer the twenty one under expenditure?
Yes, to, not twenty one, twenty, uh, we, we leave one year in between.
Oh, that's right, okay, so it's still an appropriation reserves? So once this twenty one budget laps at the end of twenty two, those monies, how, how much is in there now? I- i- in the appropriation for, for twenty one?
Twenty one, one point five.
One point, so that potentially would be, that would be added to, whatever's left of that would be, well, the whole amount would be added to.
Correct, that is, that will be added next year, in addition, I am expecting some money back from, uh, the storm we had, Aida, which we spent money, uh, from storm account, that will be coming back to the same account.
Excellent, so that, that reserve would be fairly significant, as it is now, could approach to, uh, ten million. Okay. Environmental services, um, the only question I have there is, there's still about four or five, I, yeah, that department? Or five?
You're breaking up, uh, Frank.
I'm sorry, Sanji, I, I'm looking for the number of vacancies in environmental services.
I have three vacancies now, I'm looking for additional, uh, three more positions. But I know I have thirteen employees, I, I'm trying to build it up to sixteen, and, and once, once we had twenty one employees in, in the past, and so slowly we build it up to twenty one.
Alright, so again, uh, overall, we've got through the departments, like I said in the beginning, the budget's up on salaries and wages by seven percent, and, and the, the other expenses are up by four point four percent. Both on the salary and wages side and the other expense side, a portion of that, as was said by the, by the director, is, uh, because the, um, increased inventory and, uh, buildings, um, that the county has built, has to maintain. Have any other questions?
You done, Frank?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Polavecchia. Commissioners, questions or comments, Commissioner Sebo?
It's me again, uh, Sanjeev went over all the departments and what he has to do, uh, to cover everything for this county, and, and of course Frank went through all the expenses, I must say that Sanjeev has a really, really big job for this county, and too many people in this county don't realize how much work he does. They think so much of it is the town's responsibility, and I'm constantly getting questions about that, because they get mixed up in terms of what's a county road, what's a town road, and so on. But I have to credit Sanjeev for doing such a great job with so many responsibilities, and I might add that whenever I call him about something that is needed, he takes care of it right away, he's very efficient at what he does. So thank you, Sanjeev, for everything.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo, Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, again, uh, I want to commend you, you have your hands full, you're in a, in a lot of different areas, a lot of different things to keep the county moving forward, and, uh, we appreciate you and David and, you know, your whole team for all the work that you guys do, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Time check, ma'am clerk.
Uh, it is ten minutes to six. And we have one more before the scheduled dinner break, and that was Department of Citizen Services. And, um, Mr. President, should we continue, and after this presentation, if we do, uh, do you want to break for dinner?
Yes, let's do this, um, Department of Citizen Services, and then we'll break then, we'll break after this.
Okay. I believe they are on, I just need to turn on their cameras, Mr. President.
Yeah, um, good evening, this is on Ebal Ramos, I'm trying to turn on my camera, but it's telling me that the host won't allow me to turn it on, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Uh, I will request the host to address that issue. Uh, Lionel Leach, would you please address the director of Ramos's camera? Uh, if it's alright with you, Mr. President, we can continue, there we go.
Now I can see everyone.
Good evening, floor is yours, sir.
Alright, thank you, uh, Commissioner President, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for allowing us to present our two thousand twenty two budget requests, uh, your support during the, uh, two thousand twenty one year enabled us to provide much needed services to tens of thousands of residents of Essex County in a variety of different ways. You know, our department is comprised of seven different divisions, and for the purposes of today's budget, uh, we are focusing on a, a number of divisions that, uh, do require county funding, a total number of about a thousand and nine budgeted positions are included in today's budget requests, and just some highlights from two thousand twenty one. Uh, we provided, uh, home delivered meals to more than three thousand seniors around the county with over, uh, uh, four hundred and forty thousand individuals meal, uh, in, individual meals provided during the height of the pandemic. Uh, we reopened our cafes in the park, which provides seniors throughout the county with an opportunity to socialize and congregate safely uh, during the pandemic, on the DFAB side, we reduced our, our, uh, Medicaid, uh, back backlog despite, uh, some staffing challenges uh, over the last two years, increased the number of individual SNAP cases throughout the county and improved our timeliness, operated the state's largest consolidated juvenile detention facility with minimal, uh, disruption during the pandemic, established, uh, parent support groups at the facility, which meet on a regular basis and include parents uh, from all the counties that are served at the facility, processed over five million dollars in rental and utility assistance uh, to, to support individuals and families impacted by the pandemic, and, and our weights and measures unit uh, increased the overall number of inspections in two thousand twenty one, and the, and the number of individual, uh, devices inspected to over forty three hundred, and, and with me today, I have our CFO, Carlos Gonzalez, Valentina Richardson-Green, who's our division head for DFAB, Reverend Dennis Hughes, uh, representing the Juvenile Detention Center, and Maurice Brown, representing the Division of Senior Services.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Mr. McInerney, floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, enable in the, in the office of the director, there's a, there's a reduction of a hundred fifty one thousand eight sixty in salary, uh, base salaries, and predominantly due to a, a charge off to welfare, um, that was not, that was not in there in the prior year, that two thousand twenty one was, that was not, that your budget was not charged off to welfare?
Uh, through you, Mr. President, you know, we have a number of positions, uh, in the office of the director, we have a relatively small administrative staff, staff supporting the, the department, and we charge off a, a, a percentage of some of our staff members' times, uh, depending on the amount of time that they may spend on the various grant programs, so, so then historically, we have had chargebacks, uh, but, but it has varied. Uh, this year, we added a position, which is a supervisor of technology, uh, because of the, the department decided that, you know, the best approach moving forward was to have someone that would work at the departmental level, that would support the various IT uh, folks who work in the different divisions, uh, that individual works very closely with Mr. Carl Hunt, who's the county IT person. So, you know, to answer your question, we have had chargebacks, uh, to, to grants in the past, uh, but the, the, the amount varies year by year, depending on how much personnel, how much time the personnel may spend on some of the grant programs.
Okay, so, so that, that would be true, because obviously, part of your responsibilities for, for administration would be charged to, um, the calculation that's, that's applicable to get reimbursed on, on welfare, correct?
Correct, and, and, and if you notice, the, the charge back to welfare is, uh, two hundred and seventy seven thousand nine forty nine, and then there's a, a, a charge back, uh, to grant, which is, uh, some of the other grant programs within the department. So our personnel technician, for example, who's, who works out of the office of the director, you know, she supports, um, you know, primarily, uh, the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits, formerly known as welfare, but she also provides support to some of our other grant funded divisions.
Right, and, and that charge back probably was that done last year, it just doesn't seem, based on what I have here, that it was reflected in last year's budget. Annette, was that something?
Yes, yes, Frank, I was just gonna jump in, Annette from budget, um, last year, um, the budget office was under a previous, uh, director, and that was his methodology where, um, the chargebacks are always applied at the end of the year. Um, his particular methodology was to show the pure number, not the net number, um, this year, we went back to how we used to previously do it, which is to show the chargeback.
E- either way, the charge back, the charge was done to welfare, whether it was
Correct.
or not, it was done, so what we're looking at here is kind of an apples and oranges, where we don't have the two thousand twenty one chargeback.
Correct.
And Frank, what, just, just to be clear, every time we prepare the budget on our end, we, we do include the chargeback, uh, as Annette mentioned last year, um, when, when the budget was presented, uh, it, it did not reflect it, but, but, but like you mentioned, it's always calculated at the end of the year. It, it was included in the budget.
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
Let's move on to senior services, um, there's a slight increase, and, well, there's an increase of, of three thousand on, uh, budget three oh one from the prior year, is this basically contractual increases, or, uh, it's additional position, it looks like?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President, the, the, the county funded portion, uh, of senior services is really a required match to the overall grant, and, um, you know, we've been fortunate over the last few years to have received a little bit more funding in, in, in grant monies, and, uh, the, 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 the increase here is, is tied to, uh, two community service worker positions that we were able to fill um, and, and are included in this budget.
It's a small budget, anyway, other expenses, twelve thousand eight sixty six, let's move on to consumer and constituent services. Weights and measures, basically, right, any of all this?
Yeah, I think it's weights and measures, but it also includes the Director of Community Action.
Okay.
Sees, uh, a lot of the social service programs to support, um, you know, homeless prevention, utility assistance. So, so that, that individual's position, again, it's a required match for the bigger grant, so we include salary of the division director a, as part of this unit.
Alright, I see there's some increases in salaries based on contractual increments probably, and more or less, but you do have, you did eliminate one position here, system analyst?
Yes.
Uh, okay, right, and you added the apprentice on for a considerable amount less. So that's, that's part of that, if you look at those two numbers in and of itself, uh, it adds to that change of a reduction of thirty two thousand. With regard to, uh, other expenses, they were thirty three thousand five hundred last year, they're the same this year. Generate any revenues from weights and measure?
Uh, through you, Mr. President, uh, we, we do, uh, the last few years have, have been, uh, challenging, because we, we had a number of, of businesses that closed for, for, you know, short period of, for short periods of time during the pandemic. And, you know, our goal is necess- not necessarily to be punitive with businesses, you know, our, our, our responsibility is to do as many inspections as we, uh, possibly can to ensure that, you know, consumers are being protected throughout the county, and, you know, like everything else, the more you're out there inspecting, uh, the, the, you know, sometimes the businesses for the right reasons make the kind of adjustments that, that are necessary to ensure that they're not price gouging and, and other things.
But if I may, it's a, last year, we had a hundred forty, Carlos Gonzalez, the CFO, a hundred forty five thousand seven hundred dollars in, in revenue.
How much was that?
Hundred forty five, seven hundred.
Oh, good, okay. Let's move on to you services. So this is a fairly big budget here, um, and there is an increase of four hundred forty two thousand in base salaries, again, um, I don't see any increase in the, in, in the table board organization, the amount of, the amount of the positions, um, and actually I see, uh, a reduction in salary savings despite the fact that it's up four hundred forty two thousand, these are not contractual increases from a pers- from a, what has been negotiated, but these contractual increases, like in terms of increments?
Through you, Mr. President, yes.
And, uh, at this point, it looks like there's And at this point, it looks like there's about thirty one vacancies in this department?
Through you, Mr. President, yes. You know, just as a reminder, you know, we operate a consolidated facility, you know, we have juveniles from Essex, from Union, Hudson, Passaic County, we do have a few federal detainees in our facility as well. And when we construct our staffing projections for the Detention Center, it's based on the possibility of the population increasing and the facility having enough positions in its table of organization to be able to hire to to be able to address those fluctuations in population. So we do carry a number of vacancies at any given time. Thankfully, the state has eliminated the civil service test requirement to hire juvenile detention officers. So we've been in a position where recently, we've been able to recruit and attract some good candidates for employment. But but the optimum number of JDOs that's included in the budget anticipates the possibility of an increase in population.
What are the other counties that are now participating in that, in the program of bringing, what are the other counties that you serve?
Passaic County, Union County, Hudson.
Do you have any, any numbers in terms of revenue that they bring in at this time?
Sure. Carlos, you wanna, you wanna?
Yes, that was the number, the revenue numbers per?
Yes.
Yeah, for twenty twenty one.
For Passaic County, we have three million three hundred eighty four thousand six hundred ninety nine dollars.
How much was that, Carlos?
Three million, three eighty four, six ninety nine.
This is twenty twenty one, Frank.
Twenty twenty one. Union County, we have four, five hundred forty three thousand six hundred, three hundred sixty nine.
But they owe how many months, Carlos, from last year?
They owe us like four hundred thousand dollars, more or less.
That's, that's a million dollars there.
Yes. Hudson County, we have seven hundred seventy thousand dollars. And they owe us at the time, like a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That's another nine. So that's, that's four point three nine, five point, that's five point two million dollars.
We collected cash, four million six ninety eight.
And you owe five hundred, so four million six plus five hundred, would you say four million? Yeah, four million six plus five is?
Yes, five million, five million and a change, yes.
That is a lot of money coming in.
And I would just add, Frank, that beyond the, you know, the daily rate, you know, included in this numbers, also, they pay a percentage of the school and medical contract, which are, you know, pretty substantial on their other expenses in our budget.
Are those, are those amounts in, are those revenues you just mentioned in these numbers that Carlos?
Yes, yes.
So that's school and everything.
That includes the housing, school, and the medical.
Right, but those, and those costs are reflected, those costs are reflected in your budget as well, so.
Yes.
You've got, you know, five million of thirteen million that, I mean, outside of other costs, debt service and fringe benefits on your central expenses, pretty considerable amount. I didn't realize it was that high.
And it's based on population, so.
Right.
Hudson County's, as an example, they had projected a little over two point eight billion in two thousand twenty one, but based on actual numbers, you know, they've exceeded.
Less than a million, yeah. And as far as maintaining
Passaic exceeded.
Yes.
Yeah, three point four million. On, on the, on the JDOs, are you able to maintain that that's always been an issue in terms of trying to maintain that, you know, the number of positions or fellows' positions?
As I mentioned, the number of positions in the budget anticipates fluctuations in population, so we hire, you know, based on an average of our juvenile detention population. So if we were to hire at the number that's in the budget, you know, we would anticipate that the numbers would be not substantially, but higher than what they are today. So we want to make sure we have enough positions available in case we need to hire due to increases in population. But I can assure you that the minimum staffing requirements that the state of New Jersey imposes on juvenile facilities, in our case, have been met and, and, you know, we actually provide a little bit more support than we're supposed to with social workers and community youth workers as well.
And it's, it's, really, it's the unknown that with these other three contracts that can affect those numbers, you know, substantially.
And Essex as well, you know, Essex has been a little bit more active in placing juveniles in our facility over the last three or four months. But, you know, it's, it hasn't fluctuated too much.
Okay, let's move on to Family Assistance and Benefits. This, this has a pretty substantial increase in of nine percent in base salaries, and I was wondering if you can kind of outline where that where that amount comes from. It's for almost four point eight million dollars, or nine percent increase over the, over the period.
So the total, the total number of positions reflected here is eight hundred and thirty two. There are two new positions that were requested as part of this budget.
Right.
The base salary for the positions that are currently filled comes out to a little over fifty three million dollars. The increases based on, you know, the increment raises is a little over two point three million. And the value of the vacancies in the proposed budget is a little under three point eight million dollars. So if you total that up, it's a very small amount for longevity. We take in a salary savings amount based on prior history. The salary and wages comes out to the fifty seven million eight hundred and forty three thousand four hundred and forty three dollars.
So it's, again, it's primarily in that two point three and in the vacancies? I mean, that, did you have the same vacancies last year?
Yeah, we did have to make some corrections on a few of the salary calculations by individual positions. And then what's done is with some of the vacancies, like the family service worker, we're able to hire provisionally now as opposed to off a civil service list. And we have a number of candidates that we've interviewed from within the division who've recently completed their college degree that will be recommended for some of these positions. So they didn't necessarily come in on a step one based on their current salary, if they're vacant.
Frank and and Anibal, can I just also add, from the DFD budget, the Department of Family Assistance and Benefits, they must account for the contractual increase. So the contractual increase is included in this budget. And that's the the bigger difference. That must be accounted for as well as any increment and the vacancies.
That's a big difference. That's, that's a big difference.
And that's what you're kind of missing there, Frank. It must be included in this state budget. So unlike the other departments where the county has a separate fund, that's not the case with DFAB. It must be identified and submitted with their state budget.
That was true last year, though, too, wasn't it?
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's every year, Frank.
Because last year, and what confused me by what you said, last year, the contractual reserve was itemized underneath two thousand twenty one at one point five million. I didn't see it there in two thousand twenty two, so I assumed the contractual increases were not in this budget. I assumed they were on the line item.
And that could have been a different methodology done last year, Frank.
Yeah. Do you know what those, what that amounts to? The, you know?
I can certainly provide a spreadsheet.
I want to do a comparison, yeah. Okay. But that, that explains that that they are now included in there. I doubt very much the million five that was put in contract reserve last year was equal to what the actual on, on fifty seven million. I doubt that that was equal to what the real contractual increases and increments were. It'd be much higher than that. So, yeah, if you can give me an apples to apples on that, I appreciate. Okay. I don't have any other questions, Mr. President. Mr. Ramos, thank you very much, and Carlos, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Director, Commissioner Sebo.
Thank you. You knew I would have something to say. You know, I mentioned before that Sanji, people don't, in this county, don't really know what his department does. Well, let me tell you, the opposite is true here, because with Anibal's department, everyone knows what they do, because they do such terrific work reaching out to all the people in Essex County who need them, and they're right there to help all the time. He and all his people are always out there willing to help. And Anibal, I want to thank you for all the work you did with the food insecurity in this county and the COVID situation. You've been right out there helping the county as much as you can. And you and your department do a terrific job, especially under very difficult circumstances. So thank you so much.
Appreciate your comments, Commissioner Sebo, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo. Yes, is that Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, yes. Anibal, the work that you have done over the last two years with this pandemic, man, you know, it was remarkable, brother. I want to commend you, Mr. Brown, and Carlos Gonzalez for the things that you have done to help the people here in Essex County. We salute you, brothers. We salute y'all.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
VP Palmieri.
Thank you, Director Ramos and your staff. I just want to echo sentiments of my colleagues that, in addition to all the usual good work that you guys do, it was a real honor to be with you guys at the food drives and all of the other events throughout that very long stretch where it was on a weekly basis out there, and it was probably the only social interaction many of us had, actually, but it was a, it was a great opportunity to get to know members of the staff and get to see the good work that they do firsthand. So thank you for all that you and the entire team does. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Palmieri. And I could tell you that your participation, along with the other commissioners, you know, the staff was really excited to see you guys out there with us and, you know, gave them a sense of motivation and support. And like you said, for for many of them, it was one of the few opportunities that they had to interact and socialize beyond being here in the office, so.
Thank you, VP. Commissioners.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Ramos, I too want to join my colleagues in thanking you and your staff for stepping up and going beyond the call of duty, especially these past two years. Whenever I know that I've called on you to help with constituent issues during the week and on the weekends, your staff has been there, has always been very responsive. So I want to thank you, especially during those food drives and helping people, you know, from their homes apply for food stamps and that emergency rental assistance. I really, really thank you and appreciate everything that you guys have done.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. And we see ourselves as an extension of your offices, and we know you've referred a number of residents in need. And, you know, we've done the best that we can to make sure that we follow up and provide assistance, so. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Hearing that again, I have to echo what all my colleagues have. Other, you, you guys do an amazing job, you know. All of the various departments that you run are not the easiest departments to run, you know, the youth house, DFAB, Senior Services, you know, these things, these are some really trying and difficult constituents to to manage and departments to manage. But it's a testament to you and the administration and the team that you have assembled. You guys get it done, and you do very well. So, yeah, my hat's off to you, you, Carlos, Valentina, and Mr. Brown, and everyone else, and Reverend, your whole team, you know, you guys get it. So, you know, you get it and you continue to get it, you continue to do the job. And just one thing, man, that VP guy, Carlos Palmieri, and all of the food distributions, he made the rest of us look bad. He was like, did he miss any? I mean, maybe one or two. He was like there for almost all of them. But thanks for representing the board, man. We appreciate you. And again, Director, we appreciate all that you and your team do for the county.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you so much, Commissioner. Appreciate you.
Mr. President, are we, we're gonna break for dinner?
We're, we are not.
We're gonna continue.
Who's up? Department of Corrections, are they here?
They are. Department of Corrections is not here.
Okay, anybody here?
They're not scheduled to be on until, uh,
I get that part, but you know, sometimes people come on early.
I don't believe so, Mr. President, the.
We have nobody, so we'll break till six thirty and we'll come back.
Call now.
We'll, we'll come back at six thirty and.
We have, just, just for clarification, we have David Boyd on. We'll call the administration to see if we can get the other individuals on, or Mr. Ortiz and everybody else.
Time check, sir. What's the time check? What's the time?
It's six eighteen.
So we'll, we'll come back, we'll reconvene in twelve minutes.
Yes.
Take a quick break, and we'll come back at exactly six thirty.
Twelve minutes isn't enough for dinner.
Let's David in. Edith and Matt. Nick, please make sure that we're on commercial break.
All right, who are we waiting on? Department of Corrections is up, right? Let's get a man, let's get started.
Yes, that is who is up next, and Department. The Department of Corrections is up. And I, I, I see the Director, uh, Mr. President Al Ortiz is on.
Yes.
And I see, uh, an additional, is it Orlando?
Orlando Camacho, Business Manager.
Yes.
Mr. McInerney, you there?
Mr. David Boyd is on also.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, we're ready to begin.
Mr. President, I just want to say, uh, Mr. Coltrane, mute your phone. Switch your, mute your screen.
We can begin, Mr. President, when you're ready.
I'm ready. It's on the Director, uh, Director Ortiz. Let's get started.
Good evening. Um, as you're aware, my name is Alfaro Ortiz, Director, Essex County Correction Facility, for the record. And with me, I have my Business Director, Orlando Camacho, and Consultant David Boyd. A quick state of the, of the facility is that the jail operations is normal and routine. Um, we continue to secure, uh, security, safety vigilances by searching and maintain, monitoring the inmate population to ensure a safe and secure institution. We are testing inmates and employees and adjusting to the new governor's mandate regarding, requiring a mandatory vaccinations of all staff. With that, you know, in short, um, I'll be happy to take questions along with my staff.
Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney. Mr. Ortiz, I know we can, we can't see you. I don't know if the light's out, you know.
Yeah, no, I I'm, unfortunately, I'm in my car, and I got my lights on, but, um, I'm here, sir.
Okay.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, the Correctional Services budget for salaries and wages, uh, within, uh, uh, just base salaries, excuse me, has an increase of three point eight percent, or two point three million dollars from seventy one million, thirty three thousand to seventy three million, three hundred fifty three thousand. So, my first question is, what the, the amounts for contractual increases on Mr. Ortiz have, have been allocated to a, a separate line item in the county budget. So, uh, I think it's fair to say that you don't have any contractual increases other than maybe increments within your budget. Is that correct?
I'm going to allow my, my Business Manager to, I believe that to be the case, but Orlando, can you please respond for me?
I'll through you, Mr. President, Mr. McInerney, that is correct.
Okay, so, uh, what it, looking at the positions as well, and, uh, last year, there were seven hundred and thirty eight budgeted, this year, there's seven hundred and thirty, uh, budgeted. We'll, we'll get to what's been, what's been filled, but what, what is the increase of two point three million dollars based on?
Mr. Camacho.
One second. So, the increase, uh, is, uh, based on the, um, cut, the, uh, increases, the increments, uh, the educational increments, uh, for all of our staff.
Okay, and that's pretty much what we've seen in some of the other departments, that although the reserve for any contractual increase that yet been, yet to be, yet to be determined, has been estimated in that separate line item outside of your budget, that the increments, the contractual increments, excuse me, the step increases are actually within your budget. So, you're saying that three, uh, roughly three point eight percent of your sixty three million in salaries, sixty four million, is, is dedicated to that, to, to those increments.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, um, when, when we look at the personnel summary, uh, we look at six hundred, seven hundred and thirty eight that are budgeted. In the actual category, and I'm, I have my own analysis here that you're going to have to give me a second to get to. There's sectors, seven hundred and sixty eight positions filled. So, it's budgeted for seven thirty eight. Is that, is that correct? Is it six, seven hundred and sixty eight positions filled?
Uh, yeah, that is, that is correct. Um, that number, and again, we know when it comes to correction officers, that number, uh, fluctuates. Uh, the corrections number is the number that actually goes up and down.
Right.
Now, if you look at the actual number for the officer, sir, it's higher than it normally is, uh, and at the time that we, you know, we generated this report, um, the officer's number was at a higher number than it normally is. And again, that's because we, 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 in the past, we know that the numbers go up and down when it comes to officers, right?
Right, of course.
Uh, um, but always that towards the end of the year, where we're confident that it will be where we want it to be.
Right, but do you see any, any possibilities of overexpanding that, that line item because of, of that, or is that?
No, that is correct. No, I do not foresee a problem.
Okay, all right. Let me just go to my chart here. One second, I want to just run this down, number of positions.
Frank, uh, Annette de Blasio from Budget. Can I just add, um, a budget, um, item to this? At any given time, there is a list of people on sick leave, suspension, no pay, family leave. And as you could well aware, that will, is increasing because of the nature of COVID. So, I concur with Orlando that, um, we factored all of those, um, numbers in, and he is going to be well within his budget because of the various weekly, uh, fluctuation of people being out on leave and a no pay status.
I mean, if, if, if you were to.
Mr. McInerney, just to piggyback on what Mr. Blas, Mr. Blasio is saying, uh, I'm specific, right now, we have, uh, two lieutenants, we have three sergeants, and twenty officers that are unpaid leave or suspension. So, again, that, the, those numbers also, uh, contribute to the overall number. So, if, if we were to deduct that from the six oh nine number, we're looking at five eighty nine, which is about just nine over the five eighty, uh, five eighty, uh, requested number, sir.
All right. I mean, I, I had, uh, as of the date of the payroll register that I use, which, excuse me, was the first payroll, first payroll, two thousand twenty two, there were six hundred and fifteen correction officers being paid, fifty six sergeants, twenty six lieutenants. So, from that, and four captains. So, those are all within, you know, you, you've got sergeants, seven less, CO, eleven more. That's pretty, pretty static, I guess, between those two numbers. The other larger ones were data processing programmers, where there was twenty and twenty one budgeted. Yeah, and so, so it seems fairly consistent that those, those numbers are what's being paid now. So, there were seven hundred and fifteen paid officers, correction officers on the payroll as of, um, the first pay period. So, that, that would mean that you're hiring more than the six. So, that, that would mean that you're hiring more than the 604 that you have, but those people are actually being paid. So, when you said that you have people on the payroll now that are on leave or or not being paid, is, you know, that would be inconsistent with what I just said, that there's 615 officers, COs on, when your budget is 604. That's all part of 768.
Yeah, and again, I mean, and we are confident, and we've seen this, you know, a year after, and we are confident that that number will trickle down to keep us where we need to be.
Okay, all right, fine, that's, that's fine, thank you. But can you just let me know whether those numbers I said are consistent with what you have? How many correction officers do you now have?
Right now, current, I'm showing 609, sir. Correctional officers, 609.
And how many sergeants?
Sergeants, I am showing 57.
Okay, 56.
Lieutenants are 26, and captains are four.
That's right.
We've got a captain that, they're retired.
Okay, and then obviously, you know, how did you make out with overtime last year? What was your, to 2021 overtime?
The overtime last year, we had a deficit of 1.2 million, and again, most of the overtime incurred was due to COVID. As we know, COVID really affected, you know, a lot of, affected us greatly.
Right, but were you able to charge off any of that?
Yes, sir, we were able to charge off some of the costs through the CARES Act.
Okay, so would that mean that it's, that it still affected your operating budget, or has those, Annette, have those adjustments been made to corrections? With regard to the charge-off of any?
Yes, Frank, working with our financial consultant, who is mapping out all of the CARES money, everything has been matched up and reimbursed.
So, that, that has already taken place within?
That's correct.
All departments, whether it's corrections, or sheriffs, or anywhere, anywhere else.
I can defer to Hassan from the accounting standpoint. Hassan, if you want to give a brief?
Yes, we went through all the departments, and all the salaries and wages and other expenses could be charged to CARES Act, or the American Rescue Plan, or any other grant was already, the charge back before the end of the year, and the year 2021 salaries were within the budget for all the departments. There was no any over expenditures or anything like that.
Correct. All right, so can you get me the number of, of the actual overtime? There was 7.2 million, according to what was just said by Orlando of overtime, they were 1.2 over on 6.5, so I'm sorry, that's 7.7. So, could you just get me the number that was charged off to the grants?
That is the number, yes.
Okay. All right. Other than that, there's, there's really one, one item that is very large on other expenses, and that's the alternative to incarceration, that, that number fluctuates as well, and can somebody explain that to the Commissioners, that was 13 million, it was 6 million, 6.6, it's 13 million this year, Hassan, we spoke about this too, how this number is, you know, usually, you know, fluctuates.
Yes, I will refer.
Why that's so much higher?
Yes, I refer to the man, Camacho, he will explain it.
Yeah, so the, so we, basically, the alternative to incarceration program, it's a $20 million grant, and our expenditure with Delaney Hall, who was awarded the contract, 13.3 million, that expenditure goes against the $20 million state grant. So, there is no, 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 no county funds are used. Now, your question, Mr. McInerney, as far as the, the increase, and again, that's just, you know, how we did with the contract. First of all, the cost has gone up since the inception of the last contract, which was five years ago. We also required some intensive enhancements to their facility. So, for example, we added additional security measures, we added, you know, security netting to prevent contraband from being thrown over the walls, we increased their staffing, we required for them to increase their staffing, we added operational requirements, so all this contributed to the $13.3 million budget amount. And again, that's covered under the state grant.
Right, now, if it's a $20 million grant, but if we use 13.3, we only get 13.3, correct?
No, no, so, so we, the remaining funds, they're used to finance a program within our, our jail, and, and that's offsetting some, you know, we use it to offset some of the ancillary costs that are associated with both programs, personnel and administrative costs. So, the entirety of the program is funded with the grant, and again, it's no cost to the county.
I understand that, but in the past, was that always that way? I thought in the past that that was?
No, it's been like that in the past, sir.
So, the differential goes?
That's correct, it's always been like that in the past.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ortiz, so, so where does that additional money go again? It goes to offset what?
It goes to offset, we have an internal program as well. So, we do, we do, we program in here, just like in Delaney Hall.
Okay, and is that, are those costs incorporated within this budget?
No, it's, it's, it's an ancillary, yes, they are.
Okay, so, so the 20 million comes in, and all of those costs associated with Delaney Hall and with the ancillary program are part of this?
That is correct.
Okay, so then of the 13.3, 13.3 goes directly to Delaney Hall of these numbers, and this is a not-to-exceed, correct? I mean, it's based on?
13.3, 13.3 is the number.
Okay, so the differential then is covering whatever ancillary cost you have for those other programs within this budget?
Correct, within, that are held within our facility, that's correct, sir.
And those costs, okay, and do those costs typically come to that amount, or?
Actually, you know, they, they, we, we make it come to that amount.
Yeah, I got you, I got you. All right. All right, so that's, I don't think I was aware of that. So, that's interesting, okay. Other than that, 6 million, if you take that 6.6 million dollar increase in a Delaney Hall contract, out of the other expenses, then you, you really do have a net reduction in your other expenses in 2022, and a much less of an increase overall, more of a $1.1 million increase.
That is correct, sir.
Yeah. All right, well, I don't, I don't have any other questions. Mr. President, thank you very much, Mr. Ortiz, Mr. Camacho, Mr. Boyd.
President, thank you, Mr. McInerney.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioner Sebo. I'll see her. All right.
I, I.
You're on mute.
Okay, now I'm off mute, I didn't have my hand up because I, but I do want to compliment.
Excuse me, your camera's off, that's why we couldn't see your hand.
I know, all right, but, but President Richardson called on me, so I'll talk. And I want to just say that, under the circumstances with COVID, I think they have done a wonderful job at the jail. I know it's been impossible, I see all the letters, I'm reading so much, and it's been really, really tough under these circumstances, so thank you for doing such a great job in spite of everything going against you, thanks so much.
Commissioner, every night, we get calls from either an attorney, a mother, or a family member that the inmate, you know, is feeling this or that, and we have to do what is now known as wellness checks consistently over the weekends, whatever, so we've been managing all that, yes, it is undertaken.
Yeah, it's been a very, very difficult job for you, but you're handling it well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
President.
Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions that Mr. McInerney hit on, and just listed on other expenses in terms of the requests. This seems substantial increase in, in the service equipment and maintenance line item, 700% increase in that request from last year. Office equipment, 133% increase. Electrical, 285% increase. Can you just give me some color on those, on those, on those, on those three requests, those three line items?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President, and to answer your question, so last year, we had a lot of those lines were quickly expended, again, due to COVID-related expenses, right? And what I did this year was, and again, if it wasn't for the for the increase in the alternative incarceration program, our budget would have came in flat, or actually less. So, what I did was, I just moved some monies from accounts that were less expended, and I moved them over to the lines that were over-expended, because again, we all, we don't know where this COVID is going to take us, I don't, you know, I might need to quickly purchase items, you know, and not, you know, and not go through a you know, going to vendors that don't have these items, so I needed to make sure that the lines that I used a lot directly related to COVID were properly funded.
So, appreciate that, and thank you for that, the Correctional Services arms, that's about $100,000 more, I see that you put in for?
And I could?
Firearms, is that for, what is that? What is that for exactly?
Well, that line item, I can, I can look into the particulars, and I can, you know, I can, I can respond back in writing if you want, sir, so I can actually dissect it.
Okay, that'd be helpful, I mean, I see we adopted 154 last year, and again, this year, the request was a 254 in that, on that particular.
Yeah, because I know, if, and again, I know it's been a while that we ordered actual, you know, arms-related items, you know, for the police academy with the increase of, you know, recruits going back to the academy, but I would love to give you a specific answer, so I'll just, if I can, look into it and provide you with a specific answer with that line item.
Great, so the salary and wages is going up, according to the budget we began, the salaries and wages are going up 3.3% and other expenses are going up 15.6%. So, for a total of 7 points, and we're, the overall budget is 7.3% higher than last year.
Yeah, Mr. Boyd, would you have some insight on that?
Orlando and David, can I jump in here so I can express the Office of Management and Budget, Annette de Blasio? The correctional facility uses an enormous amount of sub-accounts, so I asked Orlando, going into the budget season, to really take a look at the spending, which is driven by commodity codes in purchasing, to clean it up, and this is Lieutenant Camacho's second or third budget, and it's just, it's cleaning up the budget lines, so if you do kind of go a little deeper into it, you'll see that he's adjusted it where his spending is, as opposed to maybe a year or two ago, where we just put money where he thought he was going to spend. So, I asked him to really clean it up, to request funding in the particular sub-account line items that were more representative, because a lot of these account numbers overlap, and they kind of say the same thing. So, we just really wanted to clean it up, so that was one of the edicts that I had asked him to do with this budget.
Okay.
David Boyd, through you, Mr. President, and good evening, Mr. Gill, that's a good pull there. The arms, arms and security, the correctional facility Director Ortiz has asked that the facility purchase, because he has a lot of new officers there, and so they're purchasing a good number of additional vests, which the state body armor grant does not cover, so we're going to do that for the safety and security of the facility. We're also buying the cell extraction team, all new additional equipment, because what we've realized is that, as codes have gone up, the individuals, while they're cleaning their equipment, need secondary equipment to do it, so that's why Director Ortiz has asked for additional money in that arms line. But as Mr. de Blasio suggested, what Mr. Camacho did was move it from another line into that line so that we understand the cost. As far as office supply is also a good pull, but what they're doing with the Union County Consolidation Freeholder is they're putting on all-new video boots, all-new video equipment, upgrading the courts, and also doing Wi-Fi throughout the building to enhance medical, so that they can do telemedicine in the building, so that's coming under that office supply and enhancement line, and that's why you do see, which was a good pull, those increases.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President, just a few more follow-up?
Absolutely.
Of questions. Is the mental, mental health services, does that, does that fall under, within the corrections budget, how do we, or is that in a, or is that under a different department, like, correct, mental health services that are provided to our inmates, is that included in this, in this request?
Through you, Mr. President, it is.
Okay.
It's handled by CFG, which is the contract holder for our medical services.
And, and so what was the, and I was having just difficulty finding that, what, what did we spend on mental health services last year? And what are we planning to spend, what do we request this year?
Well, the mental health services portion is embedded into that line, so I would have to go in and extract those specific numbers, because everything is all lumped up with that, with the medical line item, so I would have to carve out the mental health portion of the invoices to provide you with that number, sir.
And that's all under their, that's all under their contract, so they're administering all aspects of those services to the?
That is correct.
And that's you, and that's usually, we usually do that as a multi-year contract, because that contract usually becomes before the board, correct?
That is correct, so this contract is a three-year contract.
Do we, do we ever do anything above and beyond what's included in that contract on mental health services for the for the inmates?
As far as I know, we do everything, they do everything that they're contractually allowed to do.
And those services are dictated by this, this non-budgetary question, more of a policy question, but those, those services are dictated by the states, like, those requirements come from the state?
Mr. Ortiz, would you know the answer to that question?
I would have to research that a little further, but we do have a standard by the State Health, Department of Corrections, and the 10A statute, that we maintain services for mental health. I can get back to you on that and be more specific.
Yeah, I mean, the genesis really of the question is, I'd like to understand it a little bit more, is obviously, there's, there's quite a bit, and of course, the professionals on the phone, you know, I defer to your judgment, but obviously, and lots of studies out there about, you know, the amount of money that is spent on mental health services and the direct correlation to how much potential violence you may experience at the facility. So, what I'm, the reason I'm asking that question is, I'd like to just understand and make sure that, you know, that's being evaluated when we look at this budget, on what we're spending there, and quite frankly, do we have the flexibility or the need to spend more if we think that's, you know, one of the tools in our tool chest, so to speak, you know, to help you do your job even better than you're already doing it?
Great, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Gill.
Mr. President, can I?
Commissioner, I mean, Mr. McInerney.
So, you know, and Annette, I'd like to involve you in this, this discussion as well. When we look at this budget, we're, 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 we're given $20 million by the state on Delaney Hall. And as was stated earlier, whether it's expended on the actual Delaney Hall contract, or we're given $20 million, whether it's Delaney Hall or not, it's both for Delaney Hall in the internal program that is run by, by corrections. But in either case, all 20 million is expended. Is that correct, Mr. Camacho? The bulk of it is, there's nothing given back to the state.
That is correct.
Okay. So typically, if, if you really want to see what these numbers are, when you other departments, you'll usually see, you know, certain, you know, base hours and other expenses, and any grant funds that come in, you will see those offset the appropriation, as opposed to being in the revenue item as the Delaney Hall $20 million. If you're going to get an apples-to-apples comparison of appropriations in corrections, you've got to reduce it by $20 million, whether it's in 2021 or in 2022. I mean, that, because all 20 million is predicated on spending those appropriations, which makes dollar-for-dollar, every, every dollar coming in from the state predicated on what you expend, all 20 million within, within that budget. So if I'm looking at this thing as an accountant, I would want to look at it and say to myself, well, last year the expenses were 105 million, less 20, 95. This year, they're 100, I gotta do this math, 113, less 20, they're 93. So, you know, if, if you really want to look at this, you know, the, the budget is very comparable with the, with the prior year. Once you, once you take that 20 million and offset the appropriations, which I think is appropriate, because it's directly related to the expenditures, the appropriations, much like any other grant that, you know, that we do. And I think it could have been presented either, to be honest. I don't know, Annette, do you have any?
I just, Frank, I'm not sure if you, I'm, I'm, I think I'm missing what you're saying. If you add 20 million or subtract money on both sides.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm saying if you take the 20 million, if, if the 20 million is a grant from the state of New Jersey, and every dollar of that is expended, because we expend every dollar within this budget. Within the $105 million last year, there was 6.6 billion expended on the Delaney Hall contract, and another 13.4 million expended on the, whatever other program is run within the correctionals department. That's, that's the way it was explained, just explained. If I'm expending 20 million out of this, and the only reason I'm expending the 20 million out of my budget is because I'm getting 20 million from the state, then in effect, it's, it's a grant. And, and we show it differently. We show it as a revenue, but fair, you know, for every dollar spent, I'm going to get a dollar back from the state. If you look at this thing, as I said, you got, another way of looking at it is to take the 105 and take the grant off, because that's what we're getting against the 105. That's 95 million. And if you take it off of one second, 105, I can't, you'd think I would do this off my head, right? It's 85. And then if you look at it this year, 113 versus 20, that's 93. So that's a more, to me, it's more, it's much more comparable, if you, if you look at it.
I'm sure you're saying, but we don't, for example, we don't do that with the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor's office gets $3 million for a crime prevention grant. We don't show that in the
No, and I'm, yeah, and I'm saying that they're getting that, that was a pilot program that started, and for some reason, Essex still, still gets that. I don't think any other county does. But that $3 million, is that predicated us spending $3 million?
Yeah, we spend the three, he spends the $3 million every year.
Okay, then, then to me, it's either or. And I think if you were, I think that would apply the same way. I mean, the reason we show that as a revenue is, is because that's, that's the way we always show. But I'm saying, if, if you're getting $3 million, it's like any other grant. I don't get to, any other grant is offset, is offset within the appropriation. If you look at throughout our, without, throughout our budget, the grants that we get that are expended based on what we spend are, reduce our appropriations, especially in salary and wages. And all I'm saying is that whether they're up in revenues or they're in grants, another way of looking at this thing to see adequately what you're actually spending is to look at it with the, with the 20 million. I'm not saying you have to show it there. But to me, that's the best way of, of making a comparison. That's just my opinion.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Gill.
So just to make sure I'm following you, so that, that's fine, Frank, but it's, I just want to make sure I'm following you. It's still it's still seven more, it's still a $7 million whether you subtract or add the 20, it's still a budget that's asking for $7 million more dollars this year than they asked for last year.
True, but there's, there's another point to this, where a lot more last year in 2021 was allocated, 13.4 was allocated to an internal program. That the, this year only 6.6 is running to an internal program.
Mr. President, if I may too, I think, Commissioner Gill, I think it's important to note that it's a seven, it's, it's, it's more money, but we're also now dedicating more money to
Delaney Hall.
Program that's, that's providing a program for our inmates, if you will, so that they are able to more quickly and more, more responsibly and more capably re-enter society. So I guess the answer would be, yeah, we could not increase, but we could then not say we're going to provide these programs. I think, I think the value, the value judgment is, do we say we're not going to continue to provide this very valuable program or not? And I think we, you know, making a decision that we should continue to do this, and I, I think it's the right decision, and I think it's one that, you know, to me, speaks well of, of what the, I would think the board and what the administration want to do to make our, our facility much more, not just a holding cell, but one that's actually trying to change lives.
And if I can add to that, I, I agree. I think this is a $1 million increase, not a $7 million increase.
So there you lost me. Through you, Mr. President, so so it's, I, I agree in the principle, so there's no argument for me. I just, just explain it to me. How, how are you suggesting that it's, regardless if you add the 20 or subtract the 20, how do you go from 1 million to 7? That, I didn't follow you there.
No, it's, it's a better view of what is actually being spent when you take the 20 off. But as was said before, we're 6.6 million up on the, on the 13.3 million. We're spending 13 points, 6.6 million more. We're getting reimbursed for that. The 20 million. If we don't spend that 13.3, more is going to go, we're still getting the 20 million. But I'm saying that effectively, that 6.6% increase is all paid for. And so if you, again, if you take that increase out, you're down to one, you're down to an increase of $1 million.
Mr. President, could I ask one more follow-up question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The, the Union County contract, does that money go right back into the corrections? The revenue, does that money go back into the budget, to the corrections budget, or, or into the general treasury?
The, the Union County that goes into the corrections.
Goes directly into corrections.
So right now, that, that's under the confinement of prisoners line, and that's the, that reflects the 11.388 million.
Okay. And it's okay, we don't, I don't know if I'm thinking about this or asking this, this question in the, in the correct manner, but is that, is there a direct line to addition, you know, to services? It's, it's 11, it's $11 million that we didn't have the year before. Dorat, can you draw that 11 to specific things within the budget?
Ms. Commissioner, I'm sorry, President, I'm going to ask Hassan to clarify. I, I understand what Lieutenant Camacho said, but I think it's, you're thinking that it's going directly to lower the corrections budget is what, which I heard you say, which I, is not. I'm going to ask Hassan just to, to go through how that actually works budgetarily.
Okay, thank you.
The Union County, Hassan Mohammed, County Treasurer, the Union County collection that we received last year was $11 million, and this was part of our general revenue. It's indirectly offset with expenses we have, because we hired more correction officers and from Union County to, to help with our increase of our expenses and our population, and plus all the contracts for medical and food and, and all these other expenses. So it's indirectly offsetting all the expenses that we, expenses that we have once we get the, the Union County contract and the Union County inmates.
And, and we anticipate to, through you, Mr. President, we anticipate to spend the money like that going forward?
We, we have, we have more expenses incurred to our correction budget because of the Union County contract. We have, we have more officers, we have the, the food contract, and we have the medical contract, and we have the fringe benefits for, for all these officers. So that's an offset.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President. Is there any scenario where this money would be spent in a different department, or does it have to be spent in corrections?
The, we, we have already have expenditures for, in, in that department. It's, it's not a direct link, because this is to support the, all the revenue in the budget. That's the, that's not dedicated for that, but it supports all county budgets. So all the increases in, in the correction budget offset all the, our revenues we have in, in the budget.
But finally, Mr. President, what, what I'm, what I'm would leave the administration with is I would, I would hope that corrections would be the priority with that money, with those type, you know, for right now, before we, before we put that money into anything else.
Definitely, we have to, to support the correction budget. And if there is any time we needed any money, we, we transfer funds to cover any, any expenditure we need. Historically, we didn't need any, any additional funding, but we're willing to support any, any need, any extra need we need in, in the future.
Through you, Mr. President, may I, may I address Freeholder Gill, because I think I understand this question. Thank you. And thank you, Freeholder. I, I understand what you're saying. So if I could just list off a few things, because Director's saying, we are getting a lot of stuff this year. So if you know the facility, the facility is going to add security fencing on all the second floors of the pods to make it safer for individuals, so that there's not that immediate drop off of those pods there. We've acquired extra vehicles, which the Freeholders were gracious enough to approve. We acquired off-road vehicles. We acquired drones for the individuals. We do put it into services. All those extra vests, all those extra security equipment, the video equipment for the courts are all coming in. So when an identified need is, is coming, we have not received a no from the administration. So because this extra money is coming in, and I appreciate the question, we are getting a yes on, on things that we are asking for.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gill, you good?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Cooper.
My question is directed to Mr. McInerney. Mr. McInerney, is there a way for you to break down for me, so that I could better understand what the actual increase is for this department and where it's going? I'm really interested in understanding the increase that's being requested. What parts are going to actual infrastructure, equipment, security issues versus programming, staffing, supportive services for the inmates? Is there a way that you could do that?
I can't, yeah.
It was very difficult to understand. The presentation was a lot, and your questioning was a lot.
I, I can't break it down that finite. I can give you a schedule that'll show you what the benefits are with regard to this $20 million and how it impacts on, on the budget.
Yeah, but I'm also looking for, so me, especially thinking about all of the concerns that I've heard this past year from inmates, from employees, from the union, from the public in general. I want to make sure that the additional investments that we're making in that department are, are, are going where it's needed to, you know, protect and shore up our, our staff, as well as give some more supportive services to the inmates that are there. And I can't really, I don't see the intimate detail when looking at the budget, just to understand how it's broken down. So whatever you can give me would be great, and then I guess I'll have to follow up with Administrator Jackson for any specific questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner, is there any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Who's up next?
Up next is County Council.
各位 commissioners, this is Annette de Blasio, Office of Management and Budget. On behalf of County Council, Courtney Gassion, she got, she had an emergency, so she asked me to read her opening statement. Frank, we can go through her personnel summary, and then if there's anything that is needed, Ms. Gassion will be happy to answer, but she did have an emergency this evening. So I'm going to read what she prepared. I also have two schedules that she provided, her settlement of suits, and also her outside county council chart. So she has both of those, if you would like those. Currently, within the settlement of suits, there is one structured settlement for 2022 in the amount of $150,000. County Council settled several large cases in 2021, including class action litigation against the register and a death case from parks. There are six higher-value cases that they are currently watching, and they hope to settle in the 2022 calendar year. She's been keeping the Commissioner, Council apprised of all of these proceedings. Regarding her outside counsel, outside counsel cases for 2022, there is a chart which totals outside counsel matters at 14, with a total not to exceed a contract value of $929,000, which is allocated in her professional services budget. The county council budget is flat for calendar year 2022. County Council had some personnel changes, and they are now fully staffed with 13 attorneys, five administrative staff. Office of Inspector General has remained flat. The Mental Health Division, and she also oversees workers' compensation. The Director of Labor Relations has moved on, and she has replaced that one position with two current existing attorneys who will share the role as Labor Relations Director. She also wanted to highlight the accomplishments for the four county council sections. So her four sections are governmental affairs, mental health. They processed over 2,500 civil commitment cases. Her next section is labor and employment. That handled 85 disciplinary matters and 15 AOL appeals. Nine employment litigations were handled in-house. The next section is the claims section, which handled or defended 119 civil litigation matters, including 53 cases that were disposed of by way of frivolous litigation letters. That were disposed of by way of frivolous litigation letters. Stipulations of dismissal, motions to dismiss and S I motions. And then the last section is welfare and support. Three attorneys handled over two thousand one hundred child support hearings. And collected over seventy-five million dollars in child support obligations. And on behalf of Courtney, um she appreciates your help and to please call her if you have any questions. But I'm sure I did not do justice to that because Courtney is so much more eloquent than I am, but I tried. Um, and Frank, I will be happy to um go back into my wheelhouse, which is personnel.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Blasio. So we'll, we'll take uh. Your advice and uh Frank, if you have any questions, you'll reach out to Courtney.
Okay, I mean, there's not a lot here, Mr. President, so I mean. She has three vacancies and her budget is, is up by one point four percent on salaries and wages and it's not, it's up by um. I don't, I don't know why. Yeah, it's not up by anything on other expenses, so it's. It's less than one percent increase overall.
All right. Administration and Finance up next.
Mr. President, can I, can I add one thing?
Oh, here we go. Yeah.
Still here. That's the. Uh, since Mr. Blasio did mention it, um. She did mention potential high-value suits. That's something Commissioner Cooper brought up. Um. I don't know what it was. Was it last week, Commissioner Cooper? Okay. So Courtney has uh given me an outline of those. We were planning to go over them tomorrow. Uh, she did have a personal emergency called the earlier, so I'll get that to you, Commissioner Cooper, and we can have a discussion offline. I just wanted to bring that up since uh Annette did mention it.
Thank you, Mr. Palavecchio. Administration and Finance up next.
Um, good evening, Hassan Mohammed, um County Treasure. Uh, Administration and Finance Department has uh eight divisions, Office of Director. Accounts and Control, Management and Budget, Information Technology. Um, Human Resources, Public Information. Uh, Purchasing Department Office and the Treasure Office. Um, salaries and wages uh had the a minor increase due to um. Uh contractual and increments and promotions. Uh, we currently have forty-eight active employees and we have five vacancies. Uh, all other expenses were flat. Um, done here for any questions.
Mr. McInerney, loisur.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um. Two seconds here. All right. Okay, so let's um. Um, Office of Director, um. The same as last year, I believe that's uh Mr. Walker's salary there. Um, and also, right, he, um. And so that's relatively the same as last year, except for the increment. There's no other expenses. Let's move on to accounts and control. Uh, accounts and control has the same amount of pers- personnel budgeted last year. Although in payroll, I only have twelve, twelve positions filled there at this point in time. I don't. This, I have three, three vacancies. In the accounts and control. Is that correct?
I believe that is one individual was on leave of absence.
Okay. I can figure that out. All right. However, there's no increase. It was a million, one sixty-one, three thirty-nine salary and wages, and it's the same this year.
That's correct.
About of twenty-five thousand, two fifty and other expenses. Let's move on to Management and Budget. Uh, the increase uh here is uh the same, same two positions. Um. But there's an increase because it's a change from a data processing to a confidential aid. Um, and from a management assistant to a senior management assistant. And that seems to be where the twenty-one thousand dollar increase is coming from.
That's correct. Correct.
Yeah, that's correct. There's no increase in other expenses. Um, so let's move on to the next one. Uh. Information and Technology, there's a forty-seven thousand dollar increase in salaries and wages. Um, there's a one, there's one additional position. Uh, that's budgeted for two thousand twenty-two that wasn't there in two thousand twenty-one, and that's Assistant Analyst. Uh, and that's, that comprises the majority, that's not all of that um base salary increase. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Other expenses are up by five thousand dollars um. From three million, four seventy-eight to three million uh four eighty-three. Uh, that's less than one percent. It's one tenth of a percent. Let's move on to Human Resources, Labor Relations. And you, could you explain the increase here? I know we go from twelve to thirteen employees for two thousand twenty-two. Is that primarily the reason for the hundred-four thousand dollar increase?
Uh, the increase, there is one position for Deputy Director. This was not there before. And plus um the Director um um salary used to be um. Charged bad because it was Mr. Jackson and now uh we have a new director, so all the salaries charged the line item. So there is no chargeback there. That that's the reason for the increase.
How many positions are filled there? I've got eleven positions, except for one.
Yes. And there is one vacancy for Deputy Director.
Okay. Let's move on to Public Information.
I'm sorry, Mr. McInerney, what tab were you on? Two or four?
I'm on four.
Thank you.
Um. Um, Public Information is up thirteen thousand. That's, that's an increase that was given to the, to the individual here, either through increments or.
This was a promotion, yes.
A promotion, okay. Um, and there's no change in other expenses?
No, there is no.
And purchasing, there's uh a thirty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-two dollar increase. Can you explain that? There's.
Uh, I believe this was the, regarding the increment increases. Um, and there is still one, one vacancy on the, in the department, in the division, yes.
But the reason for the thirty-eight thousand was what? Was that all increments or?
I believe so, yes.
Frank, uh, Annette de Blasio uh from Budget, that was also, there was a promotion within that um office.
Okay, and that, that accounts for the third part of. Other expenses are the same. Let's move on to Treasures. There's actually a decrease of of five thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars here. Um, was somebody demoted or?
No, this was the due to um the retirement of Mr. Apple.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Right, there's savings there. Expenses are the same. Uh, that's it. That's what I got. Mr. President?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. McInerney. I thought you were looking for something else.
No, I just. You caught me on my phone.
So, uh, um. Mr. Palavecchio?
No additional questions here.
Okay, Commissioners? All right. That's Finance. Thank you, uh Director Mohammed. Treasure. Who's up next? Central Expresses and Insurance.
This will be me too. Um.
Okay.
County Treasure. Um, central expense and insurance, this line item represents the indirect costs. For the whole county, um such as um postage, copy machine leases uh for all county departments. Uh, maintenance contracts, rent payment to buildings and parking lots and uh. And plus senior transportation match and uh one of the other grants match, which is a JOR. Uh, plus the expenses for central kitchen, which uh which for is the, the. For the three departments, used house and correction and hospital central meals. Um, there, there is increase in that line item due to uh increase in our senior transportation contract. And plus the JORC required uh match from the state of New Jersey. It's required more money and that's why it went up. Um, plus, we, we build in the budget, uh five million dollar to hedge against inflation. Uh, inflation rate now is around five percent. And um most of our, the, all the, most of our departments suffering from that and they need more money. Uh, we purposely put this uh increase uh for inflation in that line item. Because this is not um an invitation to the, for departments to spend more money, just to have like full control and will be um. Uh, it will be transferred to department as needed, and if we do not need it by the end of the year, we will be canceled. And this is all the central expense. Uh, regarding the insurance, uh, we have um three type of insurance we pay in as workers' comp insurance. Liability insurance and group health. Um, workers' comp went up and that's why the, and the, the claims went up. That's why we funded more this year. And the liability insurance also, it, it came um, it came up than, more than last year. Uh, group health in, well, and insurance, uh, we are part of the state health plan to plan the, the state rate went up five percent for regular employees. And around twenty-five percent increase for retirees. That's the reason for the increase on that line item. I'm done here for any questions.
Mr. McInerney? Do you have no question?
I have no questions.
You feeling okay?
I'm feeling very well.
I would double check that, Mr. President. I'm not too sure he's telling the truth.
Mr. Palavecchio?
No.
All right, Commissioners, questions or comments? Here it now. Let's move on.
Um.
Net service. Is that you again?
Yes.
Anything dealing with money is, you, you're the man.
Pretty much.
All right.
Uh, next item is debt service in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, county debt service is a hundred and thirty-three million point seven. Um, and um for two thousand twenty-three, it will be almost the same. It will go down a little bit. And uh for two thousand twenty-four, we'll see a decrease in um. In, in the debt service and an amount around forty million dollars. So we will see the reduction in debt service. Um, starting from two thousand twenty-four and after that, years uh to come. And that's about it for that service.
Oh, okay.
McInerney?
Yes, I do. So uh, one of the things we talk about, and I think it's well worth let, let the Commissioners know, is about the. Reduction of debt service coming up, I believe in two thousand twenty-four. Could, could, could you speak to that and make them aware of it as well?
Yes, um, the, our debt service schedule, uh, it will start, um, our payment will start from two thousand twenty-four. It will drop by forty million dollar. Uh, from hundred and thirty-three to almost ninety-three million. And uh the debt service also will, will keep going down uh through the years after that. Uh, our debt service until two thousand twenty-fifty. Uh, but it will, it will actually increase significantly from year two thousand twenty-four and after that. And we have another big drop in two thousand twenty-six.
It's gonna be a substantial drop.
Um, yes.
And, and I think, you know, not, not to get ahead of ourselves, but one of the. The things being, being spoken about is the ability to fund capital improvements. Uh, through the operating budget with, with those, with the, with, you know, given that, you, you know, given that reduction.
That's definitely option on the table. Um, uh, we can, we can uh do with the other method, we call it pay as you go, and instead of issue and do that. We can upper um uh use the saving and uh and uh appropriate this money directly to the capital portion of the budget.
And, and, and one of the things that um. The administration's done is the twenty million dollar self-imposed. Limitation on annual authorizations of, of uh bonding. Um. Of financing. And I, I, that's been an extremely um. Positive thing for the budget and they've stuck to it and uh. I haven't, I haven't seen a year that they actually went over it. As a matter of fact, we've seen years where they stuck to the twenty million and then appropriated. In one year, I believe, with six million dollars of uh capital improvements within our operating budget. So we're getting closer to that point. Where hopefully um. You know, at least on some. Smaller uh projects, we can, we can use those, those savings in the future to, to, to fund as we go. Uh, or should say pay as we go.
Yes, and this is contribute to the reduction of debt service. We have the self-imposed twenty million dollar uh of new authorizations, not to exceed that. And we retire around a hundred million uh for the past multiple years of, of uh of existing debts. That's why our debt service in total goes down.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Madam clerk?
Um, the next category is unclassified deferred charges. And I believe that's continues with our financial person.
Um, Hassan Mohammed, County Treasure, um, the next item is unclassified. And utilities and deferred charges. Uh, this include the professional services. Uh, line what we, where we charge the audit fees. And the maintenance of the website and the, the membership to uh NAPO and NJAC. And plus, we have a line item for IDEW uh Development Fund. And plus the prior year bills, which is any outstanding bills prior to two thousand twenty, which is very small amount of money. Um, and the, the next item is the utility. And utility item went up because of. All the incre- increase in the, in gasoline prices and all other utility charges. So that's why the utility went up.
Mr. McInerney?
Yeah, the only one that's, uh, I'm assuming uh under Public Works Utilities is a large increase or an increase of four hundred ten. What was that predicated on?
Yes, of the, all the utilities went up because of the increase in gasoline prices and in, in increase in other utilities.
And Frank, I, I'll just add to that.
There's been an internal error. You will be disconnected now. Goodbye.
Just to add to the Public Works Utility, remember what Sanji um had said about um.
Oh, yes, the increase of buildings.
MLK building live for a full year. So those.
Yes.
That makes sense. Great. Thank you.
All right.
Questions, Mr. President?
Mr. Palavecchio?
None for me, sir.
You got it. Revenues?
Yes, um, Hassan Mohammed, County Treasure. Uh, revenues uh for uh year twenty uh twenty-one, uh, we collected. More than one anticipated uh of uh of revenues. That's why our fund balance went up significantly. And for two thousand twenty-two, we are anticipating um the revenues to uh. Um. We are allowed by the law to anticipate up to the level what we collected in prior year. But we'll try to be cautious uh with some of the revenues if it was increased. Uh, due to special circumstances like um register of deed, uh, the housing market uh. Was really booming and we had the big amount of increases. So we will try to be uh in conservative and anticipating the revenue, not anticipate revenues we cannot collect. That's why we did not. Anticipate um revenues up to the amount of collected in the prior year. And this is the same for uh correction and plus the parks. Um. And we have a new revenues this year, a hospital pilot fee program. We anticipate in seven point two million. Uh, this program started in two thousand twenty-one uh for half a year. We collected. Three point eight million for that program. Basically, that program, it's a new program only for four counties. And uh we uh charge uh our nine, we have nine hospitals in the county and we charge them fees. And these fees, we send it to the state of New Jersey. They match it from federal funds, from Medicare funds. And return it back to the hospitals more than what they contribute. And we actually recognize nine percent of these proceeds. And uh, we actually recognize nine percent of these proceeds. Um, and this came to um, three point eight for six months. And this is one of the new uh, revenue uh, we added this year. And I'm here for any questions. And plus revenue for the, the taxing, we, we had given tax increase, so the tax levy is the same as last year.
Mr. McInerney?
Yeah, uh, the um, the federal inmate housing program, can you just explain a little bit more how we arrive at that number?
Yes, uh, we were trying to be conservative and um, in doing that, we have uh, the federal inmates, we don't have the ICE inmates anymore. We have only the, the, the marshal, US Marshals. And basically we have uh, the number of inmates is higher than usual because we don't have, but so many inmates are in our facility within for courts. And that's why we didn't wanna um, anticipate up to the amount what we collected in two thousand twenty-one. And, and just in case, you know, the courts start opening and the population will go down and we could not recognize the revenue.
Um, how much is the federal inmates, uh, federal marshals program last year?
Uh, it was, most of the amount was collected. I don't have, I, I know we have as of right now nine hundred and seventy of uh, federal inmates.
It was around fifteen million last year or some, does that sum?
Uh, no, I think it was more than that.
Okay, it would have to be more, but that was a number that I thought I had seen for two thousand twenty-one. So if you can get me that number, I mean, that's gotta be substantial portion of the forty million that we're anticipating, correct?
Uh, in two thousand twenty-one, we had some leftover ICE uh, inmates. And for two thousand twenty-two, we don't have ICE anymore. It's all federal uh, inmates from uh, the US Marshals. And I will get the breakdown from correction.
Okay. And, and do you spit, you know, the proceeds from settlements of suits, is that a variety of suits that were? Or is that that one suit that we, we've been under for extended period of time, insurance companies?
Yes, uh, this is, this was from an insurance company and this was one shot deal of six million dollar. I believe Mr. Jackson and uh, Miss, Mrs. Bastian uh, worked on it for years and to achieve that uh, six million dollar.
Okay, so that, that's what we got last year for that?
Yes.
That's about it. That's all I have, Mr. President. All questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. And I know Mr. Polavecchio doesn't have any. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none. Let's move on to the next.
Mr. President, I, I just want to add that we are, administration's uh, offended that uh, for, that Commissioner Sebel had nothing good to say about the good work of the administration department.
There you go.
We'll put that on a record.
With all due respect, I think you just opened a can of worms.
Oh.
I haven't responded recently because I did so much talking earlier. There was nothing more to say. But they're all doing such a great job.
Mr. President, I, I don't think there's such a thing as too much Pat Sebels.
There you go.
Thanks, Carlos.
Let's move on to commissioners and administration.
I think that's me, Mr., Mr. President. The uh, we'll start out with the uh, county executive's uh, budget, which is um, uh, starting for uh, essentially uh, well, let me just go through, starting with his, pardon me. Um, uh, an increase of uh, seven point seven percent. Uh, there were uh, some promotions uh, in his uh, in, in the department are largely reflecting some of the additional responsibilities that uh, some members of his department took on with respect to uh, COVID and managing the call center and some other things. So there was some promotions there. Um, and the uh, other expenses remained uh, flat. Uh, and the Small Business Development Office, I think um, on that there might, there was a, I think there's a typo on the two, two thousand twenty-one adopted budget. Um, it says one, seven, four, three, three, eight for salaries. I think it should be two, two, one, three, three, eight.
Oh, it. Um, yeah, so uh, that de Blasio from budget, I think um, that is just a reporting issue. Um, Robert, so yeah, that is, that should be two, two, one, three, three, eight, correct?
Right, so the difference uh, is not fifty-nine thousand increase, it's uh, about a twelve thousand dollar increase of.
Correct.
And so forth. So, and, and there are also two uh, other expenses uh, remained uh, flat. Uh, in the administrator's office, um, there's a, 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 an increase there. One was, one, we added a position, a, assistant administrative analyst, uh, position was added and in the um, and uh, we added additional money for seasonals uh, in the budget to about thirty-three, thirty-two thousand dollars. I'm sorry, thirty-one thousand dollars for additional seasonals um, uh, in the department for well, because we do, we have summertime and things like that. We do get additional seasonal um, work. Uh, also in our other expenses, uh, that went up by uh, fifty thousand dollars. And that is for the uh, expanded TNVR program that we are supporting. So those are the major uh, uh, points there. Otherwise, it's relatively uh, flat.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. McInerney? You're on mute, sir.
Uh, I don't have any questions. I, I guess we'll, we'll just do. Uh, yes, I, I don't have any questions.
All right. Commissioners next.
Now I have something to say.
Commissioner Sebel?
Thank you. Union County has the first office of LGBT affairs. And it's the fifth in the country. It's not a dedicated separate county office with a budget. It's housed in the communications department. But I think Essex County ought to have an office of LGBTQ and affairs, and it would be the first dedicated office in New Jersey, the second office in the state and the sixth nationally. I think it's time for Essex County to go on record and have an Essex County office of LGBTQ. And I think it's time, we've waited too long to have such an office. And Mr. Jackson, Robert, I hope you will go ahead with this. I think it's time. We've waited too long. We have a large community in Essex County for LGBT and I think it's time that we had such a dedication and that we had this community development here, right here in Essex County. It's time. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. President, with your permission, I can, I can comment?
Absolutely.
Um, don't disagree, uh, Commissioner. Uh, coincidentally, tomorrow morning, I don't wanna um, steal the uh, county executive's uh, thunder. But um, suffice it to say, we have a meeting. We've interviewed a number of, of candidates, met with the members of the, of the advisory board.
I'm aware of that. I'm aware of that.
And uh, we actually have a conversation scheduled for tomorrow. Um, and uh, I will, I will just say that I suspect that uh, th- this week you will be pleasantly surprised. Not surprised, but.
What else?
I don't want to say anything more than that because I don't want the county executive mad at me. I just, I'll just, I'll just leave it there.
Okay, I'm hoping that my request will be answered. I will be absolutely thrilled. Should I contact the county executive or leave it the way it is?
I, I would, I would give him a call tomorrow afternoon. But I, I think he, he might have something to tell you prior to that.
Is he announcing it prior to that?
I, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything else. I'm not getting in trouble.
Commissioner Sebel, he's trying not to say anything else.
I'm perfectly aware of what he's trying not to do.
So why are you trying to get him to say it then?
I'm not trying to get him to say it. He said that I should call the county executive tomorrow afternoon. Will that be after everything happens?
Mr. President, if I may, I think what he's trying to say is maybe you should watch some C-SPAN in the morning compared to how we rated with C-SPAN's programming. Thank you.
Okay, Robert, I'll call him in the afternoon. I hear you. But why not more by the afternoon?
What's, what's next on the agenda?
Uh, Mr. President, before we go on to our budget, can I make a quick comment, please?
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you. Mr. Jackson, I want to commend you and the county exec for putting together a really good budget that's comprehensive. It was easy to follow, with the exception of one department. I was able to clearly follow it year after year. It's been a very pleasant budget process. And I appreciate everything that you and your staff has done to make it seamless um, and possible for us to do this via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Greatly appreciate it.
Mr. President, if I may?
BP Pamaris?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jackson, let me just say what an honor it is to uh, work with you folks. And now that in uh, this leadership role, for me, it's been a, a real uh, a real good lesson in how good government works up close and personal on a county level. And so I want to commend you and your team and Jay and all of the members who we've been seeing here. Uh, this budget isn't easy to put together, I am sure. And, but you, but you guys make it look relatively easy. And uh, we're lucky to have Frank on our side to help us interpret this question. But when we do have the question, certainly, and we want more information, uh, that's never a hindrance, it seems. We always get the information that we need. It comes through clearly and uh, there's always the ample opportunity for us to learn more. And for that, I am grateful and look forward to more of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, anybody else?
One last question for Robert. Robert, can I tell Joe that you told me to call?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That won't get you into trouble.
Don't worry, Commissioner, there's about five people who already texted him.
Only five?
I only see five from the administration on.
Commissioner Gill, you want to respond to, or you good?
I'm, I'm good. I concur with everything and I, I actually think it's a great comment by, in, in all seriousness, I, I uh, wholeheartedly support Commissioner Sebel's effort to get this done. She's been talking about it for a long. Uh, respectfully, she's been working on these issues for a long time. Um, and uh, and absolutely, it's great to see that that advocacy is, is being listened to and, and look forward to seeing what the announcement is. And thank you, uh, Robert and to, to the entire team. So um, I was just gonna say, Mr. President, to you and your team and, and to the um, um, you know, there's some things in here, in this last particular budget for administration and finance and some, some raises. But they're, they're absolutely um, well deserved. Um, there's nowhere I go in this state where people don't talk about the county of Essex's response to cook, you know, to this pandemic and to this crisis. So um, you know, that, that um, that, that, those raises have been in no doubt by, by earned, you know, by the, the professional staff that we have uh, working for us each and every day. So thank you, Mr. President.
Now, thank you, Commissioner Gill. And I, I too, uh, want to commend Commissioner Sebel on her advocacy for LGBTQ community to get things done. And also want to commend the administration and Mr. Jackson, uh, it, it's, you're easy to work with, uh, as the administration has been, you know, it's been easy to work with. And this budget is clear, is thoughtful and is always on time. So, you know, it's uh, I commend you on that. And, and just to uh, echo what Commissioner Gill said in terms of going around the state and with the envy of the state and those raises are really warranted. And it's not just in the state. There are people talking about Essex County and their COVID response all over the country. So it's really incredible and I, I take my hat off to the administration uh, for their response and their continued response. And tell the county exec, he doesn't have to take as many pictures anymore. It's like nineteen pictures a day. I don't see where he finds the energy to do all of this stuff. But it's incredible and well deserved, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I, I, I forgot one comment. Thank you. Um, I, I'll be remiss also not to acknowledge and point out that there is no county increase this year. Um, so that is tremendous, especially in this time where a lot of us are struggling to do more with less. A lot of people are unemployed and have lost their jobs. So to know that the county exec has gone above and beyond and done a tremendous job with COVID and truly put the county first, but to know that there is no tax increase, I think that is commendable. It's to be applauded and it's something that we really need to point out. So thank you again, Mr. Jackson. Please express my gratitude to county exec um, and your entire team.
Thank you again, Commissioner.
Okay, last up?
Miss, it's, you're on mute, Frank.
Okay, Mr. President, um, Commissioner's budget is a fairly easy budget because everything is really fixed in terms of salary by ordinance or uh, well, all, all by ordinance, to be honest with you. So our, there's a slight increase in our budget of um, eight thousand seven hundred and forty-six uh, dollars. Um, but in our other expenses, uh, we're still at two hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred. Um, we may have to take a look at that, as I explained to you earlier uh, to see if there's any adjustments that would be needed there. With regard to the clerk of the board's budget, um, I don't know if she wants to speak to herself, but it's fairly simple. There's um, an eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollar uh, increase in that um, from, from the prior year. There's also a, at this point in time, no increase in um, the other expenses. Um, typically, the other expenses in both the uh, commissioner's office and the clerk's office are, are under expended. You're usually money left over. So uh, we, we do have to take another quick look at this before we go to introduction of the budget, as I explained to Mr. President uh, earlier. Uh, just one last look to make sure we got everything that we need in there. Uh, other than that, uh, there's the audit which comes under the, which comes under our, our budget as well for three hundred forty-eight thousand. Um, but that's it. That's, that's where we're at.
Mr. President, may I add some, some additional, I, uh, yes, and I've had this conversation with um, Frank McInerney and we just haven't had a chance to really uh, follow up. There may be an additional expenses that became necessary and as an addition of hiring a archivist as a result of the consultant we brought in and the massive uh, responsibility we have with our archive. Um, uh, the, the responsibilities are so big that it requires bringing on an archivist. So we'll be discussing that. Um, so that will be a salary increase um, that will be reviewed with you, Mr. President. And um, also, it may not be significant, but uh, just to be sure that the uh, the money is in the budget for finally completing the fully automation of our agenda process. Meaning on the administrative side, which uh, the administrator is aware of. And also Carl Hunt, who is our CIO. So those are the two um, uh, areas that we need to make sure that we're fully funded for our, out of the clerk's office.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So uh, commissioners, there isn't anything else, no other questions or comments? Motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. So move, have a great evening. Thank you all for participating in this uh, in this budget meeting. Have a good night.
And thank you, President, for doing such a good job.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Sebel. Appreciate it.
Well done, Mr. President. Good night, everyone.
Good job, Mr. President. Good night. Good job, Mr. President. Good night.